Hello, we're calling the meeting to order. It's 4:00 PM, Wednesday, June 19th, 2024. Let's see, what else? Okay, so what we're going to do first is, is Josh here?
He had to run back to the office, so he's going to be a minute to wait.
Okay, so when he comes in, if I'm not aware that he's walked in, we're going to break to him and take care of that, which would be item 7B. We'll go straight to that. So the first thing we're going to do is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. We're going to jump around a little bit today. We're going, let's go to item 2. Somebody make a motion? Oh, so I'll make the motion.
Yep, there you go.
Yeah.
Making motion approved, meeting minutes for 5:8, 5:28, 6:13.
Okay, all in favor? That's three in favor. Okay, where am I? Okay, and we're going to jump down. So that's done, right? Item 2 is done, right?
Yep.
We're going to jump down to item 5, review of the treasurer warrants payroll. Thirty-five, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and...
Yep. And account payable thirty-six. Make motion approve both.
Okay, and accounts payable thirty-six, go ahead.
Make a motion approve both as read, I second.
Okay, all in favor? That's three. Okay. Let's go to... So Josh is here. Let's, let's... How much of the towns do we want to take care of? Josh, and that first? Okay. Okay, Josh? You're going to have the floor. This is Josh from Hamlin and Associates. This is item 7, new business, B. I'm going to... What we're doing tonight, and I'm glad you're all here, is we're setting the mill rate. And so you're going to be able to see how it works. And it's a bit of a process, so Josh is here to explain. We did a reevaluation of the entire town this year, and that's as far as I'm going to go. We'll let Josh do this because this is a bit of a process to figure out what the mill rate is going to be. And I'm going to step out for a minute, and I have to.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what you want me to talk about.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I mean, you did a reeval.
Right, so everybody, the values in town are going to go up considerably.
Yep.
After this year, if we didn't do a reeval this year, then we're looking at the town being at 55%. That means what your property is selling for and what it is assessed for, there was a 45% difference. But we had to bring their values up quite a bit to come up to 100%. If you did not do that, if you just said, "The heck with it for the state, I'm not going to do a reeval," they take away every government-funded money that comes into the town, home sit check, bedding check, tree growth reimbursement check. You were talking a couple hundred thousand dollars that the townspeople would have to make up the difference because you're not getting that fund back from the state. So that was the reason for doing that. Right now, you're looking at a town's valuation of around 134 million. Before, it was 78 million. So we brought this valuation up a lot. Keep this in mind when you get your property tax bills. It's going to be assessed closer to market value than what it would sell for. Right now, we're seeing, well, brand new mobile homes go $100,000 now. Where four years ago, you could buy one for 45 to 55. Land, two acres of land going for $20,000, $30,000. Well, $10,000, sewer, $10,000. By the time you add all that up, just for a simple, civilized mobile home, you're talking $150,000 to $180,000. You know, we went to a home show, manufactured homes right now, $249,000 square foot. You know, a thousand-square-foot home would sell for $249,000. That's not through land, while it's at their basement. You talk to any of your builders, I mean, it wasn't 10 years ago, they were doing it for $120,000, $150,000 square foot. They're up close to $200,000 square foot right now. You know, so these are the values that we have to deal with because the state mandates us to if we want to keep receiving them state funds. I think, let's see, last year, like, the home sit reimbursement was $126,000. That would equivalent to a mill rate increase of four to five mil just in that instance, just losing that one reimbursement. So keep this in mind, you know, this is a hard process for everybody. Even the town officials, they're pulling their hair up too every time I talk to them, you know, they're like, you know, me and Michelle have been in contact for a few times, trying to get the budget straightened out. And she's like, she was surprised, you know, she looks, and I emailed her and said, "Well, the mill rate looks like it's kind of going out of, you know, following something." She goes, "Wow, that's a big difference," you know. I thought we never, evaluations went up. And then she was like, "Oh, yeah," you know. People that don't do that every day don't realize how that works. In actuality, the budget in the town and the valuation together come up with your tax bill. This year, it looks like the school budget went up considerably, which is not going to help. I did a mill rate calculation on this year's budget with last year's number, and it was looking at like a 25, 20.5 mill rate. So you would have seen an increase of six mil anyway. We are, with this new valuation, we're probably going to look close to 12, 12.5, but I don't know if we finalize the budget tonight. So that's how the process work. My company was the one that did the revaluation back in 2008, I believe it was. So you as a town didn't have the team to do a full revaluation because I've been the one up there doing the management list then. So we got to save some money that way. But however, we still had to re-figure everybody's values. So that's kind of the reason why we had to bring up everybody's values. You know, you're kind of in a lose-lose situation. If you didn't do it, your tax bill wouldn't have gone up, it would have been a lot.
So where, with what you did, Josh, where did we end up compared to the state?
We ended up at 103%. But we initially talked about doing just a straight 30% increase. We ended up going a little bit higher than that to get us up to who... I didn't want to have to charge you guys next year to come do it again. You know, so I'm trying to make this whole for a few years, you know, the best we could for the numbers we got. I do have a list of sales here, and I'll give them to you guys and if you want to pass them up, you can. If I can find them, I know they're all comparisons on late June today. Well, that's fine.
You use comparison?
But I'll get them here anyway.
A comparison sale?
Yes, exactly what the state uses for sales. And right here. You know, if you want to make public copies so other people in the town can have them, it's not published information, but it's just... Sales like this one sold for $284,000. We had it assessed for $120,000. So that's a big difference.
What we can do, I mean, if it's something that people want to see, we can post it on our website.
Or they can come get copies.
Yeah, 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 that's probably more appropriate.
So that difference you just said, Josh, was that before or after the reeval?
Yeah, now, this sales will show you the new values in them, okay? What I have them assessed for now, and you can see that the ratio is 103%. And it's still quite a variety of range there if you look through your sales. The market today is whatever you can get out of your property. You know, there's really, I've seen two acres go for $30,000. I've seen two acres go for $15,000. And then, you know, by the time you add your well-insepted, you've got $60,000 a piece of property, and you haven't even put a hole in it yet. You know, so that's what we have to look at, bringing this market up to 100%. The market's crazy. It's been crazy since COVID, everybody knows that. We as incentives have tried to go, try to see a lot to these towns, but the state will allow them to do it. So it's kind of putting towns in a bind. And it's not just annual. I work in 21 different towns. We re-assessed, catapulted this year, probably looking at that next year. You know, it's a crazy market. So that's the reason why.
Did you reassess each property or did you just kind of do a blanket?
I ended up having them do a new whole pricing manual for each property. Now, I didn't go out and actually go in every property.
Right, because that'd be a full assessment?
Right, that would be a full reeval. That would have cost the town way more money than they wanted to pay me. And I can't blame them because you're hiring the same guy to do the same measurements that he did 20 years ago. Of course, you broke around and got what was new, you know, but it's private getting in everybody's homes now. And to be honest with you, when we do a full reeval, we don't get everybody's homes. Usually, it's leave notes on the door and have meetings, and you only see about 10 of them in the town.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Josh, a $120,000 home, you know, valued at $120,000. What's the value of the house?
Roughly? Roughly, 20.
I hope you're more precise, roughly.
I would have to look it up. The map is lost.
And what is the current mill rate?
1845.
1845?
And you dropped it by?
Because looking at close to a 12.
Well, you dropped to the, to the left, so third. And you doubled the value of the house?
Well, we, 40%, 42% on the average. But you've got to figure, too, the school budget went up close to $200,000. So if we was working on the same, on the same budget as last year, it wouldn't have seen such an increase. But of course, when you add $200,000 to a budget...
Well, it's all related to spending.
Yep.
What's that? I said it's all related to spending.
Well, unfortunately, yes.
Well, not really, unfortunately.
Well, price of fuel's going up, deposit money every year, wages, minimum wage. So, yeah, of course, we're going to spend more.
So, Josh, with that, what, every, every year what we do is there's a worksheet that numbers get plugged into. Some numbers are set, the school, the county. These are all numbers, actually, I don't know whether those numbers go, yeah.
So this is, and again, we need to make sure the numbers are finalized, but this is looking at close to the 12 mill rate. Town, what's our county, town, school.
Is that overlay 55?
Yep. So we're going to depend on you guys to finalize your numbers.
Right, right. Because typically, you do less than overlay than that.
County budget was up too, correct?
Yeah, yeah. County goes up every year, unfortunately.
Those are the two big ones.
These are some of the comparisons at that mill rate. You were asking for some comparisons. I did get back in time, and I did in this mill rate, but I'm not, you know... So people's taxes are going to go up some.
Right, right.
Yep.
Right.
Now, you said that this is a wiggle room as far as like the overlay, right?
Okay, excuse me, we don't want any conversations, please. This is, we're, this is, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't concentrate. And this is an important decision we're making tonight, okay? And if you're interested, great, if not, please leave.
He's just checking some numbers.
Okay, no conversation, no conversation. I'm, I'm sorry.
I don't think you are.
Josh, I have one question.
Okay.
I just want to know, if the budget and your revenue isn't correct, and you put it on the worksheet, let's just say the figures aren't correct, what could happen to the town?
It all depends. The state will give you 5% leeway, leeway. But if you don't raise enough money, then we're going to send another tax bill. And that's totally legal. They, it all depends, you know? Hopefully, we have the numbers pretty close. I mean, it all depends what happens at town meetings and all that. That all takes to effect, you know, whatever you guys wrote it on at town meeting. School budget, we just got in, that went up quite a bit this year. County had it going up.
Haven't yet.
What's that?
Say, haven't yet. The county budget hasn't been assessed.
Well, the projected one that we got was...
Protected, doesn't go to...
Well, then that's a number that's still going around.
If we want to commit now, we're going to need projected. It's either that or we wait and don't commit right now.
Josh, got my figures. $120,000 to $220,000 is between 80% and 85% increase, not 40%. 18.5 mill rate, you take 35% of the light. So you increase that by a left valuation, but it is 85%. And you're going to reduce the mill rate by 35%.
Well, we also had a bigger school budget to work with, too.
Okay.
It, it all takes effect in the mill rate. I mean, you can't tell me that you wanted more money for your school and the mill rate's not going to go up.
I'm not telling you anything like that. You're playing fast and loose with the figures. The figures are clear. You reduce the valuation, you reduce the mill rate by 35% approximately. And approximately 80% increase in the value of their home. And here's the numbers you just provided.
When I started this conversation, if I said we used this year's numbers with last year's, this year's budget with last year's valuation numbers, your mill rate would have been 20.5.
Maybe?
20.5, that got taken out right there.
You don't do, no, until you do the math on those things.
Huh? If you want to come downstairs to the office, what am I doing?
Don't come anywhere near your office.
That's unfortunate. I'm not playing fast and loose with any numbers. I can't give them the numbers.
When you say it increased 5% and it increased 80 to 85%, that's not telling the way it is, Josh.
Excuse me.
Now, I've asked you before.
Exactly. And I know we've had this conversation before.
No, we never had this conversation.
But we are, you are using numbers that have nothing to do with this year's budget increase. So if you want to compare apples to apples, let's compare apples to apples.
Yeah, let's compare apples to apples.
I'll figure out this year's numbers with last year's budget, and the mill rate would go down.
Going down 35% because of what you're saying.
Well, if you want to add another $200,000 to your budget, it would have gone down more if you didn't have to. I'll beat on your own, Josh.
So, Josh, I have a question. As far as at our annual meeting, our, a portion of our budget was, was knocked down by $256,000. Is if that do, that would be reflected in our mill rate as well?
Yes.
Right, so if we need to go back and have another town meeting, a special town meeting, to try to appropriate more money to pay general government, then we will have to send out more tax bills if we...
Yeah, I mean, you're only, what you've given me for figures is what we're raising for taxes, period.
Right.
I mean, if you want more money, it's going to have to come in another form of the tax bill.
Right, right.
So you're going to have to take that in general fund or...
Right.
Unless you've got it in general fund, yes.
So...
If you want to commit tonight, that's what we're doing.
Right, right, right.
I mean, these, these numbers come from the town. Your town meeting, your school budget, your county budget. Them are not numbers that I pull out of my head. So, of course, it's correct.
There's also quite a bit of building going on. And I'm saying, Bill, I dare say that those have had at least a million, $1 million and a half in that property down there. That should offset, you know, the funding.
It will offset some, yes. A million dollars worth of valuation times your mill rate doesn't add up to $200,000.
Where do you get $200,000?
Uh, that's the increase in your budget, between your county, your school. Yeah? I don't, I don't, I have nothing to do with these numbers.
So you threw out some that you had something to do with.
What's that?
I said you threw out some that you had something to do with.
The valuation of the town.
You said that's an increase of 80%, uh, 40% and half a 35%. It was that.
Are you using 40%?
So, we got the value of the town right now at 134. It was at 78. According to state standards, and you can look at the sales, we're at 103% when we was at close to 65. Them sales are done by the state of Maine tax assessments. Every year.
Who they are.
So, so the percentages that are on here are...
The new values.
The new values.
Yeah, that's what the property sold for. And that's what is the assessment. And this is the percentage difference.
And that assessment is last year's assessment or this year's?
This year's.
This year's, okay, this year's.
That's how we got to the 103%. If we used last year's, we were at the 65.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the state, like I said, the state is looking at another 10% decrease next year.
Right, 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 right.
But the way you did your evaluation, where it's all straight across the board, you may have some that evaluated 20%, some that may have been 60%.
Right.
But for what you're saying, overall, compared to state level, that's where you got the 40% increase.
Right. Pretty hard to do a straightforward assessment unless you start valuing property that sold, what they sold for, and that's illegal. The state demands that that's chasing sales.
I know that they say that, but in reality, that's kind of what they do.
Kind of, except that they do all the sales at once.
Yep.
You know, if Dale Gray sold his property for $180,000 and we went and assessed it for $180,000, they call that chasing sales. But if you have the whole town that sold it for more, we value the whole town more.
Right.
That's not chasing sales. That's called revaluation.
Right, what I'm saying, though, is at the end of the year, you're going to take that one that I sold, and Jeff sold, or Michelle sold, and that's what the state's going to use as that number.
Right. The state is actually...
They're going in at the end instead of individually.
There is no difference. And if you look at them sales, the state has actually helped the town out. They threw out a lot of bad and, you know, sales that are good and bad, some that are low and some that are high, to try to help the town out. I mean, they, they have a process they have to work with, too.
So as far as moving target numbers, can we go down through? And, and you can tell us which ones are moving targets at this point? And, I mean, I know the overlay is.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it.
This year, what you want to take out of undesignated funds? I mean, if you decided to take an extra $100,000, if you went to a town meeting and everybody voted to say, "We're not taking an extra $100,000," reduce commitment, that would help a lot. However, I don't know if you've got it, you know, I mean, I'm not...
Right.
I don't know how that works. But generally, once you start that process, you do it every year. If you take $100,000 out this year, it's got to, you got to make it up the next year because you don't take that $100,000 out, and the mill rate goes up.
Right, 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 so you're always...
It's kind of a, that's what I've found in other towns that we've worked with, too. Usually, your county and your school is two numbers that you really can't budge on. You know, once that number is committed to the town, you've got to raise it to pay the school, you've got to raise it to pay the... Then you've got to realize that 60% of your tax bill goes for your school budget. Look at your last year's tax bill and the percentages on it. So take away 10% for your county. All you really have to work with in the town budget is that leftover 30%. And how much can you cut in your town budget? After a while, you don't cut it so much.
So, so did you run several different overlays or no?
Not at this time because I'm trying to make sure the numbers are finalized.
Okay.
You had mentioned about another town meeting. I didn't know if we were going to wait and commit after that, before.
Then you weren't sure.
Right. I think we're pretty close for them numbers are caved, you know, for the selectmen to review. You guys signed that paperwork, so you guys need to make sure that the numbers are correct.
Right.
Because you're responsible.
Right.
I'm just the assessive agent. You guys sign the actual official paperwork.
Right, yeah.
And we can't play too much with the overlay because that's where the 2% discount comes, right?
Definitely.
So...
Yep, you've got a 2% discount that comes out of overlay. And I'm sure there's going to be a few more people asking for abatements this year. So a nice overlay would be nice because there you go again. If we get cut too much into our overlay, we're sending out a second tax bill just to pay for the bills that are coming. I don't want to do that. I don't want, I had to do that in Harmony because they forgot to do a part of the school budget, and it was a nightmare. I felt bad, you know? However, mistakes happen, you know? They didn't do it on purpose. They have two schools over there. They have Dexter and the Harmony, and they just forgot to add them when they did the budget. You know, it's not a simple process for anybody. I didn't, you know, I committed 21 towns last year, and it was high for everyone. And it's going to be hard again this year.
So a couple of things, we, we know that we can't go to town, a special. We can't have a special prior to...
Towns is a...
Right, so we can't, time-wise, just...
The only thing, if you were to do a special town meeting, I'd have to use post tomorrow, a Friday, a warrant, and we don't have time to pull that warrant together to the street, right?
No. And you want the tax bills to go out?
Well, you're, everyone voted to do the 2% starting July 1st. So if we didn't have that in there as a date, we got to start July 1st to do the 2% discount, we didn't have time to play with.
Right, right.
But we don't.
So bills have to go out so that people can take advantage of it.
So people can look at 2%.
Right. What was, what was the amount last year that was, that people took advantage of as far as the 2%?
It was close to $22,000, like 19 something.
I mean, we played this number down.
Right.
Scary low, but...
Right, yeah.
Every one you're doing it.
Yeah.
Because you never know every year how many people are going to take advantage of it.
Right, right. It's a moving target number. That, that is, I mean, that's just a guess, that's a guess.
I went back to see the history as to how much you have. It seems $22,000 is a magic number that I've seen across some of the ones.
Right, and we've kept it very tight as far as, you know, we did not put a lot in there because we're trying, we were trying to keep everyone's bills down. So we didn't put a lot of money in the overlay. And, you know, our, our abatements were, we were in pretty good shape. Yeah, exactly, exactly. So that 55 is probably a little high, I would say, wouldn't, I mean...
I'm just worried if we get three about, we don't know how many.
We're going to have four.
You're going to have four basements this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're going to have more abatements this year next.
I mean, I, you know, I looked at yours specifically because you were the selectman, I don't know what you want to tell everybody about. Y'all looking at a $500 increase this out this year, you know? And that, and that's one of the reasons I brought yours up because I knew you would be here, and I was going to ask you if you might even share that with everybody about.
When you're looking at that overlay number, do you remember... you remember, like, say if you, I know you had fifty, which even thinking there's gonna be a bunch of abatements, to me, fifty, I think is high. But like, what is forty? Remember how many ten thousand that did, and what's that do for you?
That'll drop you down to, I would have to figure it out exactly.
Do you, do you have your, can you?
Can you get it close at a forty? You're probably looking at eleven eight, um, which is gonna make a big difference in your tax bill. Ten thousand dollars, doesn't, you know, in a million dollar town doesn't change your mill rate a whole lot. I mean, you gotta budget, uh, one point six million dollars is what has to come out of taxation. So, when you're talking one point six million dollars, ten thousand dollars isn't...
Right, right.
Gonna change, unfortunately.
Um, did you do any permutations or no? This is the only one, as far as, this is the only one, this is the only...
We've got a couple more over here, but I think...
So, it's only these two.
I'm just, we're, we're never done a rebuff, so I don't...
I know, I know, yeah, that's exactly...
We're all agreeing, but you gotta have more abatements, what?
So, that's, this year's budget was last year's number.
Oh, okay.
And it was gonna be a twenty-six, twenty point six.
Okay, so you ran this year's numbers with, no?
This, last year's valuation was this year's budget.
And it, it pops it up at twenty. Twenty is the mill rate.
Yep. So, the mill rate would have increased, uh, you know, two point zero one anyway. So, that's something to consider when you're trying to compare everything. This, uh, mill rate right here was last year's, eighteen four five.
Okay. And that's with a thirty-two overlay, thirty-two thousand overlay.
That's what I was wondering if we did last year's.
Is that last year's, or, but that's with this year's budget?
That one we did last year completely.
Oh, okay.
This one with the twenty point six is last year's valuation, this year's budget.
You're only allowed to play with it so much, so it's kind of...
So, everybody's tax bills would have gone up, and that's the reason I did it.
Yeah, that's a good...
No matter if we did a revaluation this year or not, the taxes were going up.
Right, right, that's...
And it probably would have been twenty more point six, it probably would have been more than that, because we wouldn't have got so much back in your tree rows, your exemption, that's not including that also. Did you, anybody notice last year, your home said what value one tax bill was, nineteen seven fifty, I think it was? And that's 'cause we had to decrease it by the percentage that the state allows. So, if a town's at sixty-five, they give them, they let you certify ten percent more than that. So, we take sixty-five percent, times it by one point one, that's how much we have to reduce your home set by. This year, your home set's gonna go back up to twenty-five thousand, 'cause you're gonna be at a hundred percent. So, uh, you're looking at, uh, and I figured that a three hundred and ten dollars deduction for having a home set eventually.
Okay.
So, this, uh, right here is what I had for a comparison, and anybody can come up and look at it. The twenty twenty-three's budget, the county figure that I was given, it's gonna go up almost twenty thousand. The town budget actually went down. The school budget's gonna go up two hundred and eight thousand. So, like I said, them are the numbers that I give, given to me to work with, so that's all I can present to you guys.
Right, right, I understand. Where, where is the county number on here, please?
First number's county budget.
Okay, oh, there you go. So, that's not settled yet?
No.
I have no idea. Did they send you a bill?
The jail budget is red set, but the rest of the county budget is not.
When will that be? Do you know?
Well, probably late October, maybe November.
Oh, 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 okay, okay.
They have a separate budget committee.
Okay.
And they scrutinize the budget, and they'll go through it, a long process.
I see.
Every dollar of the county cost, every dollar.
So, that's not something we can hold and wait for?
No, the jail budget is red set.
Okay.
It's about ten percent increase.
Well, what are you thinking about overlay?
So, if that's the case, Paul, that, you said the jail's ten percent over, chances are that twenty thousand dollar county increase is probably pretty close, 'cause it was one eighty, almost one ninety last year. So, that's pretty close to ten percent straight through.
Depends on how negotiations, it'll only be on the government.
Yeah, but I mean, I think it's probably pretty close.
I don't know. They got some vacances. But they, they, I don't know what happened on the negotiation.
Well, it probably won't go down.
I would guess, I don't know. I would say, while the jail budget's about ten percent, they're expecting about a hundred thousand dollar increase to go in prisons. More than that, so the jail budget's...
Do you have any other?
Nope.
Nope.
And I'll give you a bunch more when we wrap this up, exactly, plus it.
Right.
Where Murphy lived.
Right.
I mean, twenty percent on mill rate.
Can you guys speak so everybody in the back can hear, because I can, you guys are talking amongst yourselves, we can't hear back.
Sure, sorry.
Thank you.
So, in your history, when you do a rebound like this, I mean, we all agree that you're gonna have more abatements. Is that why you recommended the fifty?
Yeah.
'Cause you're expecting?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm expecting people to come in, you know, and some of them are probably gonna be legitimate. However, if you look at what property's selling, it's crazy. It's crazy. Everybody says, well, the market's going down since COVID. I haven't seen it yet, and I've worked in a lot of towns. It has leveled off, and there is not as many being sold, but the prices have not gone down.
So, um, I, we want to nail this down tonight.
That's actually, Jeff, that's what he just asked me, what I was thinking, because we've never had the overlay that high.
Right.
But I was hoping for forty, but the only thing is, is
Yeah.
in this conversation, the twenty thirty number works for what we've always seen in the past, because it was where what we've always seen in the past.
Right.
This is brand new, this is your experience, this is your expertise.
Right.
So, if you say forty or fifty, in my opinion, I'm gonna follow what your lead is, because you're doing all these other towns that have done that.
It, it's always a gamble. I hate to get to that point where we use up all of our overlay and people come in and ask for an abatement, and I say, no, 'cause they can't afford it. Then we have to go to county commissioners, and you guys end up paying anyway, even though it's for the upcoming for next year's budget. But it's still not ideal. Ideal. Um, I'm hoping not to see any abatements, to be true, but, uh, um, I just went through this in the town where I live, you know, um, my taxes went up four hundred, one hundred and fifty dollars. This year, um, probably gonna go up one more than that. You know, I don't know what to tell people, you know, I gotta pay my taxes too, and I don't like it, so I'm making the same vote as everybody else. But we don't pay our taxes, the town doesn't run.
Right, and, you know, it's obviously been our, our goal that everyone can afford their taxes and live here, and, and, um, so that's why we've worked so hard on all of this, um, to, so that there are other things that we have control over that we keep down. So, uh, yes, Paul?
What was the percentage increase of our budget this year over last?
Like town budget? Or the decrease?
The overall amount the town has to raise?
Is an increase because of the school budget and because of the county.
Increase for how much percentage, do you know?
I just, I don't know the percentage, it's two hundred and eight thousand for the school and...
Right.
And...
You got fifteen right there. Twenty twenty-three. All right, so last year, you needed to raise one point five two seven eight six point seventy-two. This year, you need to raise one point seven oh six two oh four point twenty-eight, if we go with the twelve mill rate.
So, that is about a ten percent, a little more than a ten percent increase. Going down the top of my head.
Without a calculator, I couldn't tell you.
Play exactly, Paul.
I don't expect to be that precise. The gentleman or family that has a house that was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you've increased the valuation to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If my figures are right, and again, like you, if this went from scratch, the parent tax is twenty-two hundred and twenty dollars. An increase is going to go to twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, or about a twenty-five percent increase versus the money raised in the town of ten percent. I guess I'd say that's a change.
But like you said, though, that's why I asked the question, 'cause I was unclear by how he was doing that. He's saying it was a forty percent increase, because he's using the total valuation as a forty percent change. But when he did these, he didn't go straight across the board, so if this person had a very underevaluated house, so I'm kind of guessing, maybe that's what this house was, was underevaluated, and that's why it's going up so much?
When we started this process, we wanted to do twenty-five percent across the board for everybody. That was just what we wanted to do to start with. That wasn't gonna help the town.
That was gonna gross eighty percent, because whoever this family is, was a fix, a fix, so they used that.
We've got some houses in town that are just alike, one sells for a hundred and fifty, one sells for a hundred and twenty. We got some properties that was set, was assessed for twenty, and now they're worth way more than that. So, when you do a rebound...
You've gone by politics.
When you do a rebound, it is common to notice that a third go up, a third go down, the third say, well, the same, that's taxes. That's what is considered a fair rebound.
I could show you a multi-million dollar properties paying eight hundred dollars a year taxes.
I'm sure.
I could show you property that's worth two hundred thousand dollars, and that paying eight thousand dollars a year taxes.
I'm sure. And if you wanted to hire... If you wanted to hire a bank appraisal at nine hundred dollars per property, they could probably get you exactly what you're talking. But you, the town couldn't afford to do that. That's why my license is mass appraisers, a whole town appraiser, not a property appraiser. Two different licenses, two different things you're talking about. We come in, we evaluate a town, mass appraisal. Certified mass appraisers, that's what my license is. You hire a bank appraiser, they might tell you, yeah, house is worth a hundred thousand more than the town got it at, or they might tell your neighbor, it's worth a hundred thousand less than the town got it at. That's called the average mass appraisal.
Well, banks are interested in all the money right now, they're doing appraisals, so that's... everywhere.
I would like to see the person that's doing it for nothing, 'cause it costs me a lot more money just to have my house appraised. Cost me nine hundred dollars, so you call that guy that's doing it for nothing, they'll have to move into yours.
Okay, so, um, we are going to try and move along, and, um, so, I think, are we going to go with the fifty-five overlay?
My question, Michelle, have you reviewed all the numbers he has on his sheet, so everything is set?
We have worked back and forth all day, I forget, on just the, um, we tweaked a little bit, but it really didn't affect the overall mill rate that much.
No, but I mean, as far as what he has in there that we're looking at, just counties, the schools, our budget, all of our numbers match, we're good to go.
Sorry.
I'm concerned.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, do you wanna, do we wanna go up? Sorry, I gotta talk louder. So, we're just, we're just talking right now, the board, we're deciding what we want to pick as the overlay, um, and that's, that's where we are right now.
He's gonna figure it fifty or fifty-five.
Fifty-five thousand.
You're looking at eleven eight to go with like a forty thousand dollar overlay, but you're not talking...
How much?
Right.
Two percent?
Right.
So, you're gonna recommend fifty, Joe?
Fifty-five?
Fifty.
Oh, he's got fifty-five on here, but fifty-five.
Now, that's not gonna be exact, until we get... If you agree with the numbers on that paper box, then that's gonna be exact, but from my understanding, you're still... Is that the numbers now, or?
I believe it is. I believe it is. I went over the budget, um, both of the times, did the different, um, income to offset. I can't tell if it's going up or not.
So...
I mean, so if you tell me you only want forty thousand, no overlay, it'll change the mill rate, you're gonna get that, I think that's...
I'm going by you.
Right. I mean, you're the professional.
'Cause we've never done this, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, you're the professional, you, you've got the, 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 um, knowledge as far as seeing what's happened with other towns, and, um, that, that, that's what we pay you to, you know, to advise us.
Right.
Right, I mean, if we were a normal year,
Yeah.
not a rebound,
It would be less.
we'd be thirty.
Yeah.
Me, thirty, twenty-five, I mean...
The best part about the overlay is we don't spend it, we do that for a different commitment next year.
Right.
Not the best, so...
Yeah, it just goes in the river.
Right, right, but we've always tried to keep it close. All right, so, are we, do we wanna, do we want to decide on this tonight? Because time is of the essence here.
We're just gonna set the over.
Right. So, we're gonna set it at fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and thirty-eight cents?
Make motion.
I make a motion to set the overlay, and which makes our mill rate... I'm trying to find the number.
Line nineteen.
What is it, line nineteen?
Line nineteen.
Twelve? Straight twelve?
Yep. That's what we're talking about, correct?
Straight twelve.
Yep, straight twelve. Um, did you this much overlay?
Yep, yep.
Like I said, it, from there, it's pretty much juggling numbers. If you want forty thousand, then you'd not pick that, but like eleven eight, eleven nine, you know? The only other thing I, you could do is take more out of surplus. That probably would've...
Right, right.
Right, you need to go to another meeting for that, so... These numbers here, like I said, these are, these are pretty much non-votable now, from what I know.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, um, so I've made the motion, um, we're going to set the mill rate at twelve with a fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight and thirty-eight cents overlay. That's my motion.
I second that motion.
And we will vote. All in favor? Okay, three in favor. Thank you very, very much, Josh, for your time, and for, um, giving us a little presentation, which is very helpful. I owe you, and...
You gotta talk to the twenty, Josh.
Fifty-five, one...
I think I did, yeah.
Ninety.
Oh, fifty-five, one ninety-eight, thirty-eight.
Let me see, what you, Josh, what do you have for...
Okay, so, did I handle it?
The, we'll, we'll, we'll be moved to...
Is it raining out? 'Cause I don't wanna do exec session. I don't wanna send everybody outside. It's raining. Okay. We're gonna move on. So, um, I'll hold off for a minute on that. Um, item three, uh, the town manager's report.
So, June thirty?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
Do you need me for anything else?
No, we are all set.
All right.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very, very much, I appreciate it.
Yep. June third, we sent out six bids to six different companies to give us a figure on what it would cost them to put together a bid pack. Plymouth Engineering, A.E. Hodgskin, Wentworth Associates, Capitas, Nixon O'Day, and there was one other group in Portland that deals with historic buildings. So you've got three engineering groups and three groups that deal with historic buildings, preservation. So we should be getting those back on, I do believe, the twenty-first of this month, so it should be coming in. I entered us into the salt bid. We do the next town over, it doesn't cost anything to enter the state's salt bid. You just put your name in, you tell them how many tons you want to use, and you're obligated to those tons typically saying Gaville uses a hundred and fifty tons of salt per year. The contract this year was awarded to New England Salt. Last year, you paid eighty-eight dollars a ton for salt. This year, by entering that bid process, it's eighty-one ninety-five, so we save nine hundred and seven dollars on salt. Trio, trios, we've talked a little bit about the trio system that we have. We're looking at next year's upgrading the trio system, but we also had a DMV inspection, and they do not like the box that we have on the wall right now. There's a whole list of other stuff that we have to address, I didn't bring that list, but we'll, we'll tick them off one at a time. But that was one of the things they picked up on. To go to trio host, which means no box in the house, they take care of all the security. If Josh wanted to hook into us, he could, and he's secure. That's one thing with our box right now, DMV says they want nobody hooking into us that way, but with host, he could. So I'm just gonna throw some numbers out there. If we go to this, we're gonna have to move to it at some point, because the box we just not, not support anymore. It's thirty-nine ninety-five for the training and the conversion. It's three thousand dollars for the hosting. It's a thousand dollars for the setup. Host itself is three thousand a year. The maintenance fee, which we pay anyway right now with what we got, is eighty-nine twenty-nine. So roughly the first year, it's like nineteen thousand dollars to switch this whole system over to trio host. And after that, it's eleven thousand dollars a year. So we're paying eighty-nine now, when you go to this, if you go to this down the road, it'll be about eleven thousand dollars a year to switch over to, switch the trio system over.
When's the mandatory switch? Because I mean, they're not gonna, they're not gonna support the old system much.
First of the year.
So next, we don't have to.
You don't have to do anything, well, you're gonna have a box on the wall, that's, it's a standalone system. And if something happens to it, that's what we pay.
But that's what I mean, they're not gonna, after the beginning of the year, they're no longer gonna support the old.
And DMV just doesn't like it either. And DMV could pull places to reach the vehicles.
Ah, interesting, ah.
Another thing, I, I couldn't answer the gentleman, I think he might still be here, is I've had a lot of question on ATV trails. Which ones are open, which ones are closed? And I heard rumors that a state pulled out of our area because we didn't have enough people to put the hours in to maintain trails. So people are asking me which roads were open, which ones are closed, signs is still up. I, I don't know.
The signs that are still up aren't for ATVs anyway, those are for cars. Those are the worn cars, the ATVs can be on those areas.
That map would be some suggested trails to bring ATVs into town, to businesses and stuff. As everybody knows, there's no way to get, well, there is, somebody said like forty-some mile circle to get from Dover into Guilford and that. So I said I'd bring it up to the board and...
There shouldn't be a map, there was maps in the town office of what roads that are open.
I can't find, I'll have to look some more. Hey, this gentleman, so the...
Can you, excuse me, can you please announce yourself?
Yep, I'm Alex Johnson with the Dover Road and ATV Club. The signs on a lot of the roads anyways are the ATV signs, they're access road, beginning and end signs. And then, so they're for the ATV, it's not the...
So, Dale, do you know, I know you were...
Yeah, I mean, all of the, Dowdy Hill is not, because of that state.
Right.
Same way when you go all through East Sanger, but we had the issue out there because that's the...
Oh, yes.
The line road, and Dover wouldn't approve.
Dover, yes.
So that one's not approved, but for the majority of them, they are.
So we still have open trails?
Open roads, yeah, they've been approved by the board.
Okay, so there should be a map.
So once the roads are open, they're not, they're, that's town, that's nobody else.
So there should be a map, it's just some...
Yeah, there should be.
Owned for that.
Because the town's approved all those roads.
Who generated...
The town agreed to buy the signs and maintain them, actually.
Did you generate this map, this...
No, this gentleman that generated it, he's, he's looking at how can you get from Dover to get to Sangerville to Guilford to the trails, bring more people this way, bring more business into town.
Okay, okay. Okay, so this is, this is proposed?
Yeah, he just, he just drove that up, but some thoughts.
Is it Alex? Oh.
Hi, John McTominay, owner of PKB. Just, this is a little proposed map I threw together today to show proposed routes to get from the railroad that out in East Sangerville down into town. As of right now, I'd say it's Burrows Road, East Sangerville Road, and Flanders Hill, they're all ATV access roads, but there's a disconnect from those roads down into town because they have to cross or come on to state roads. And I called the DOT last week, they said, I wasn't allowed to speak to them about ATV access. They said somebody from the town would have to approach them with an application, fill it out, and once it's filled out, they start the process of doing a traffic survey on the road where we want to open it up to ATV access, and then the whole ball starts rolling from there. So I'm just here tonight to throw that out there, those are two different routes that I was proposing. Both of them are, you'll see the spot where we need town, state permission or state approval. Those, there's a one-mile stretch on twenty-three, I think we'd have to move speed limit signs, so that might not be as easy to do. The second route, or a better route, I think would be from the Pine Street or Dowdy Hill Road. That would be a two and a half, two point six mile stretch. And I think Alex was telling me today, there's quite a cost that was along with that, having the state open it up to ATV access.
So they, typically, the club will approach down, or John's approaching down, the club will get town approval, and then they'll fill up the application for the access. And then, like you said, the state will come in to do the study, and if they approve it, they'll, the state DOT will install all the signs, and it's three hundred and twenty dollars per quarter mile. So they do two signs per quarter mile, one road each for protection. And it's just ATV access, so...
So our, my request is, can we start that process? Have you guys fill out the application, submit it to the DOT, and just start the ball rolling? And if it comes down to needing money to do it, I'm sure we can probably raise that somehow.
We can go back, I know the town actually appropriated, because this has been brought up before about funding the ATV signs and things like that, and in the past, the town has said yes to that. So I think they would still be in favor of that. The only thing, and the way, every road that's got access right now, the way it's been handled is the citizens come in, they've asked, "Hey, can this road get opened up, so I can get to the trail?" And we voted it yes or no. I think everyone so far has been a yes.
Yeah, yeah.
But Dowdy Hill and twenty-three, we haven't formally talked about that with the state, we haven't gone through the process. But when they were talking about trying to go the other way, coming up through Guilford, I know the state looked at both of those roads, and Dowdy Hill was questionable because they like to have a wider paved shoulder.
Right.
And then twenty-three, the shoulder was okay, but they didn't like the intersection coming off from Flanders Hill.
Right, it's too fast right there, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I'm in favor of trying to move that forward, but I know in the past, those have been the two...
Hangups.
Topics of that, that's all.
So do we want to pursue this as far as filling out, it's an application?
That's what the lady on the phone said, that there was an application, the town has to fill out to start the process.
I do have the application guidelines in the traffic, you have all that.
Do, I mean, is this something that we have, I mean, I would make you the point person, since you're, you're, you have a lot of knowledge with regard to the ATV trails and stuff, is this something that we want to tackle?
It's really, it's the, it's, once you fill out the paperwork, you're gonna submit it, they're gonna come out.
It's all on DOT, yeah.
It's all on them, a hundred percent, all you're doing is saying...
Oh, okay, okay.
We do, we're, we want this, you're gonna do it for us.
Okay.
There's nothing on the town as far as anything.
I see, so it's not something that is...
So I know on other towns, they've just done a town approval, and sent in the letter, and then John, well, the club or would send in the application.
Okay.
So if you guys do move forward, you can just write a letter of approval, and it would be submitted with the, it goes to the ATV program, and then it'll be over.
So, do we want to make a...
Is this a route to do that? Or we just don't try to do that? Well, like Flanders Hill, that's already open, no, Mills is open, Burrows is open. Really, all we're talking about is those two state pieces. And that's the piece, everything else in the town, we approve without the state. It's those two roads you can't. And again, east, once you go all through East Sangerville, and you hit that line road, we can approve one side of the road, but Dover had to approve the other, and they would, so that's why.
And then we had to do all that research as well, I have all...
You guys didn't work, were working with all the town and over there, so hopefully, they're...
So, do we want to make a motion that we are, or do we want to move this forward? So that they can go ahead and, and do their work? Okay, okay, so I'll make a motion that we are in favor of, of moving this forward. And at this point, should, that, that's enough, right?
Well, do you want Michelle to write up a letter of support, and we can sign it, and then it goes along with the paper?
And, and, and we'll have our clerk write a letter of support.
Excellent.
And, and then you'll get back to us if there's anything else we need to do, but that's the motion, is in favor of, of...
Writing a letter of support.
Right, writing the letter of support.
Perfect, thank you. My question is, well...
One second, we need a second, and then we can have a discussion.
Second.
Thank you. That's fine, I'm just trying to keep order, go ahead.
My question is, if you're going from the Burrows Road to Sangerville, what, that leaves up Stutzman's on the other side. If you can open that road up, that needs to be opened up so people can go to Stutzman's as well.
Yes, it would open up the road. It'll open right up there.
So everybody wants to go there.
And then the other issue is that when the state went through there and ditched the roads, there is no embankment or whatever. I know three ATVs have rolled over.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure they're gonna want to do that, but I'm sure...
I know, I'm just saying, that's, coming up over right there by my farm, or down here by where Paige's farm is, it's...
It's by your house.
It's by my house, remember?
Yeah, it's just accidents waiting to happen, but...
Okay.
I have one more question about this.
Sure.
Insurance, who's responsible for that? The state?
Not us.
Not, yeah, that...
Still different than a car, car accident.
The question was, who's responsible for insurance if somebody gets killed on their four-wheeler?
It's public insurance, correctly.
On a state road?
Public insurance covers your insurance, right.
But at the end of the day, it's really, it's very no different than a car accident. And that's why they wrap it up as having mandatory insurance on ATVs.
There's no mandatory insurance on ATVs.
Nope. Nope, but they've always, they've talked about it because of this reason, when you're in the middle of all kinds of... Yep, a hundred percent.
Sandy?
I have a question, I don't know who can answer it, but they're saying that when you pass by now, somebody who's in currently is not four-wheeler or ATV access. I was riding my horse the other day, and a whole bunch of them went flying by, going eighty miles an hour, and I was like, who's watching?
I was in my garden when they were...
So I'm not really in favor of that, unless, who's gonna police it?
Well, we, we have, we have no mechanism, right.
Who's gonna police it? Every now and then a hand or a police.
Okay, well, let one person talk at a time, please, just so that we, with, with regard to the recording, it's very helpful so that, that taking minutes and everything else that we, everybody can speak and, and is heard and recorded. So, can, would, yes, Alex?
So, in the state application, they're very, it's, there's a whole booklet about what they expect in vis, uh, sidelines and shoulders and the way the road is, is planned, and they're very strict on safety. If it's not safety, if it's not safe, then they will...
I want to see people go, I want to see people here, I'm hopeful, like, you know, at the same time, I don't want to die, and I always go eighty miles an hour.
No, and, and I was...
This close today.
I would be surprised if they will open up Dowdy Hill, just because of the shoulders and...
Yeah, that's crazy.
And with, and with that being said, my only thing is, don't judge all of us ATVs on the couple of idiots you see on the road, because I see a lot of idiots driving cars, but I'm not gonna judge all of you, probably a few in this room, but not all. So Jess, let's, let's give us a little bit of leeway here, we're not all stupid.
There is another route, and we've, we tried to get this approved, because Sue and I started the club years ago, and hasn't done anything for a few years. But there is another route that takes you from the covered bridge on the Sangerville side of the river.
But did that get closed off completely, that they won't reopen it?
That's what I'm saying, we could never get permission to run up through there, but it's a very nice trail.
It is a good...
To Dowdy Hill?
It will take you from the covered bridge all the way to the church. Actually, it will take you all the way into the pits of Haley's.
I've been on that years and years ago, and that was a good, good trail.
I went within eyesight of the covered bridge in my Jeep probably four years ago. It stole a road down through there.
Okay, we have another, can you state your name, please?
Larry Daggett, I'm the trail master for the Abysporers Club, and to Chelsea's Point, and to Sandy's Point. I've been twelve years up here for the, dealt with a lot of this. Our experience has been, they're going eighty because they're afraid they're gonna get stopped. And our experience has been, if you open up a trail or a road legally to give them a place to go, they will be going slow, and they will wave and smile at you on the way by, rather than going extremely fast. We still have idiots that are going extremely fast. That stupidity, I can't afford to hear, it's just...
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is, I, I think, what probably would be great, because there's a lot of concern and a lot of, you know, pros and cons and all of that stuff, probably a workshop set up by, by your ATV group to answer these types of questions. Because certainly, we can't answer these questions. We're just saying that we will write a letter of support, and we haven't voted on it yet, and so I'm going to, I, I think, discussion wise, I think we've had a good discussion, but I also think that it's worthy of a workshop where you really do a, drill down and address of, of concerns and, and, you know, so that everybody enjoys it, is safe, and, and also people on horses are safe and can enjoy their time without, you know, terrifying the horses, so, anyway. So at this point, I'd like to vote, so if we can vote, I'm voting in favor. So we're voting three all in favor of writing the letter of support, and then I would go from there, I would put that in your hands, and you can check back with us, if, if you need anything else from the board. Okay, moving on, Jeff, thank you.
The last thing I have on the manager's report is you asked me for more information on the air packs. And I've talked to both manufacturers again, and it, it's my suggestion that we go with fire pack, they're eighty-three twenty-five a pack. It'd be my suggestion, you buy two packs now, there'll be two packs and four bottles, and then before the end of the budget year, close to January first, buy two more packs and four more bottles, and that offsets your packs. So you're gonna have one year, you're gonna have to replace four bottles in one year, and the next year, you'll have another two packs, you've gotta replace four more bottles, so they'll stagger, you're staggering of your packs. That's my suggestion. That, that's my suggestion on the Airpacks.
Okay. Um, all right, um, let's move on, please, to the road commissioners' report. Item four, please.
So, I did the ATVs, um, the only thing I have on road commissioners' report, um, other than the salt, which I mentioned on the managers, 'cause I was spending money, is, uh, we graded, we had Lawson Landscape ingrained West Road, Milton Mills Road, Burrows Road, uh, McNorton Hill and the Line Road. And, uh, actually, they look pretty good, we didn't do anything, uh, towards Silver's Mills, um, uh, Newt's supposed to do that, um, he had his graded tortoise path. So, we did those roads, that's all I have on road commissioners.
So, is Newt gonna do, uh, west of, of Silver's Mills or, or, or no?
Warren's supposed to do those.
He is, okay.
I'll get with him on how those are.
Okay, but he's, he's broken down at this point, you said?
He had it graded tortoise path, my, I called him out of respect because he's graded roads, so I called him and told him I was gonna have Lawson, he had time to do it. Lawson was gonna do those roads and then he could do those the other way.
Okay.
I really clean, I mean, Anderson was cleaned up in the spring, but the only thing that I'm kind of concerned about Anderson is that last year, we put that crushed ledge in there and they were supposed to put more gravel on top of that, and we never got back to doing that, and I'm worried about those puddles in there now, and that crushed ledge has got, we gotta be getting close to that, I'm just afraid we're gonna start popping people's tires in there if we don't get more material over that. And I know we put that same type of material on the West Road, and I'm not sure if they've got enough on that either.
Which one?
West Road.
That come on really, really well.
Okay. I mean, the crushed ledge is a nice material, but it's also scary, it's never not covered, that's all.
It's, it pops your tires?
Yeah, it's a little crushed ledge.
Oh, oh, so it's very sharp?
Those points stick up.
Okay, um, moving on to item six, old business, A, computer issues. So, I don't know if, uh, Jeff, do you wanna address that, because you, the computer?
Computer issues?
Yes.
So, we had it in the budget, but the budget got reduced, it is what it is, and in the meantime, we're, we're ten years past the replacement of the unis that's presently set in the town office on computers and terminals. The terminal that was at my desk, uh, they quit, the only way you could get it was rattle the box, it would pop on, pop off, so we had to replace that unit. We're starting to have problems with Sam's computer in front that she uses for DMV, um, we did have to call, uh, SJ Rollins the other day, 'cause we couldn't get the emails on. She tried everything, she worked most of the day, we shut stuff off, we turned it on, SJ Rollins, they came in remotely and they got it back up and running. But, at, at some point, with a new Trio system and everything, um, we're, we're gonna have to update, update the office and get more modern. And, uh, and it's just to protect your information, um, stuff don't communicate well with each other in the office, and the new system, everything will be integrated. But, that's where we need, need to go, at some point.
Right, okay, and Michelle, you were having trouble the other day, your box, you said, was?
Yeah, sometimes you just have to wait twenty minutes, so I get started and then I go do something else on my, if my computer don't tick them up, it can take twenty minutes to forty-five.
It's not, it's not that we want new toys, um, when I first went there, got in the office, everything was so slow, so I had SJ Rollins come in and look everything over, and it was their suggestion at that time that it is, they're old, they're at the end of their life and, and we're trying to limp them along, we'll do the best that we can, because we don't have the money to replace them, um.
How many do we have, Jeff? How many computers do we have?
Three.
And plu, and then the, the room, the lap, uh, the, yeah, the little lap.
So, what we're gonna do is the three terminals are set at the desk, we're gonna add a specific terminal, twenty-six, twenty-eight hundred dollars, that'll separate on the desk, that'll be dedicated to DMV, so if somebody comes in, we're at the desk, if you're working on, she's working on her board, she don't sign out, go into DMV.
Excuse me, excuse me, it's extremely disruptive to have chatter in the room when we're trying to discuss the business of the town. Thank you, please be respectful of, of our process, okay? And honestly, also for the recording, I'm sorry, Jeff.
So, we, we need three more, at some point, we'll have to, we'll have to replace two, and it would be nice to add one, just for efficiency.
Yes.
Let me check tomorrow, um, we all know the mill's getting smaller, we just bought over a dozen computers last fall, they're all reconditioned, but they're all up to date, um, some are going to Michigan, some are going to Canada, let me see tomorrow what we have left.
Yep, the suggestion was Windows eleven, 'cause.
Yep, and that's what, that's what I mean, they were, we bought them as refurbished, but when we bought them, they were all up to date, and they were in November, I think, is when we got them.
I just have one question.
So, let me see what we can do.
With the SJ Rollins, are like, are we set in stone with SJ Rollins, is there a reason that we're going with them?
Because, we used it with, we used it in the sanitary, we used it with water, they've been very good, very responsive.
I, only reason I ask that is because I am, I pay them when they send their bills in, so I personally dealt with them many times and I have found them to, for instance, be charging double when they're coming to town, say they're coming to this shop and then they're gonna go to the mill and they're gonna come over here, and they're doubling on their mileage fees and they're cranking that up, and most people that just pay their bills and it's not their career, it's not their job, it's just pay bill and it's off their honey, they don't notice, but I notice all that shit, um, they are the highest company to go with and they will screw you at any given point, is all, that's what my concerns are. That's all.
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Yes?
Um, my name's Melissa, um, the company that I work for also uses SJ Rollins, and, um, I get their invoices every month for our IT department, and you really have to watch hours, um, because there's no contract and, and, and you have to look at the invoices in every detail, and you almost have to negotiate every month, like, why are you doing this, when, you know, you have to question it, so.
I agree with that very much, so I, I don't disagree.
Is there a reason why both of you guys' companies continue to use them though, I mean, do they offer a service that?
Well, 'cause they've been for ten years and we're kind of like, not saving, we're kind of stuck right now, you know, we're trying to grow individually, and so, right now, it, it works, but yeah, there are other choices.
We get very picky and choosy as to when we have to call them for anything, it is.
But is there a reason else, like, why you guys, your company hasn't changed to somebody else?
No, but we're not, I don't wanna give us your information, but we're not, we're not really using them as of right now, unless there's a huge disaster and we have no other choice but to call, then okay, but now, just with the last, I would say, two years or so especially, it's been.
And they're just definitely too, but yeah, it's just, um, we're stuck on your, your, your information's there, so, I mean, it would be a huge thing for us.
Do we have a contract with them?
No.
No, we don't, 'cause there are other, there are other groups, so, um, um, I mean, I, I mean, we can discuss this perhaps, and, and that does dovetail, um, I wanna jump, just jump to item seven, new business, J, remote participation meeting policy, one of the issues, um, is, is being able, for people to zoom into our meetings, um, and for, um, if a board member is not able to be present, to be able to zoom in and vote, however, we can't do that, we have, we can't do that at all um, because of the computer system we have right now and the budget being cut, um, so, um, I, you know, we do, that might be worth looking into as far as perhaps a different, you know, I, I don't know, but, but.
Just, just to get other options, do I mean, I mean, to get other opinions?
Brian?
Does anybody ever look at the state surplus? Uh, I know when I worked for the state, there was all kinds, all kinds of things that the state turns in, some of the stuff is no good, but, I mean, it's amazing, when we go down there to pick up stuff, it's amazing what they take out of departments and put there, it's bought for pennies.
Yeah, I went down to the Donny two weeks ago and all they had was all the Windows ten stuff, but yes.
But you wanna keep your eye on it, 'cause you're always turning stuff in, and you get friendly with the clerk there, they'll let you know when something.
Get friendly with Jeff.
She does sound efficient on it.
Learning from you, Paul.
Okay, moving on, item six, old business, B, quick claim, so, the, we will, that's something, you know, we may want to look into, I, I, I mean, I don't know, but we, we've got a computer issue, and we've got an issue where I've get, getting phone calls that Sam's computer's pinwheeling and I'm getting calls that yours is, you know, blowing up and making, so, we need to do something, and we will have to, if we do have a special, which we were going to have to, um, see if we can, um, fund computers to, so that we are, you know, that we can register cars, if DMV kicks us out and says, no, you're not safe, um, to register cars, then we've got a problem.
That'd be the Trio system for next.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, it's gonna tie into that, because you're not gonna go to, you're not gonna spend the nineteen thousand to upgrade to Trio with what you have for a computer.
Correct.
It's not gonna work.
Right.
I have a question, Jovi, your question, okay, is, once we go through the budget thing, why do we not have reserve maintenance programs or councils or whatever for like, the fire packs and the, the stuff in the, in the town hall, where the office, we got in trouble, why do we not have any maintenance plans where we just tuck a little bit away every single year, so that when this comes up, everything, it seems like we talk about, it's always, it's at the end of its life, it's at the end of its life, and we have no money to do it. Is there any type of programs or councils you have for that type of stuff?
It's on Word Chief, so, town office has stuff on Word Chief, Matt, Matt also has his fire department stuff on Word Chief, so when you see the E is the stuff, particular, uh, projected lifespan of, of it, that, that, that exists.
But no money is being set aside, is what I'm saying, we're not, we're not making little maintenance funds for these kind of things.
That's the cookie, Jeff, there.
Right, right.
Yeah, no, we don't, it's, all that money is there, it's just in the reserve, it's all in one account.
Right.
It's not five dollars here, ten dollars there, twenty dollars over here, it's all in one slot.
There's no, no.
I just think that might be a better way of governing than throwing everything into one fund, and then, I mean, are our votes balanced right now, do we even know how much money we have, do we know? It seems like everything's getting all scrambled up, I mean, it would be easier to go, okay, here's the fire department fund, that's what went in it, we can balance that this month, we can go ahead and balance, here's the office staff, we can balance that, and we can kind of balance each department and then look at the overall fund, instead of trying to follow everything in, in one fund, has to be quite expensive.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's not my forte, so I don't.
Just waiting for the audit to come from.
Okay, all right, let's, let's move on, 'cause we've got a lot to do tonight, um, um, so, um, item six, old business, B, quick claim deed, certified letter to Mr. Gould.
Not me.
Not him.
And the quick, quick, quick claim deed has been recorded, um, the lawyer suggested that I send a certified letter to Mr. Gould, but also send it to him right in the mail, so, we're waiting for those to come back.
Okay.
So hopefully, that issue is.
Is resolved. Item seven, new business, A, special town meeting, general government budget and timeframe, so, we know that we are going to need to have a special town meeting, um, and so, um, do we wanna set a date?
Whatever you'd like to do.
Um, and also, general government budget, talk about the budget, um, as far as that's concerned, and what we're going to need to go back and ask for, and of course, that's not built into our mill rate.
Right, and I'm guessing that we're probably have to have a workshop to come up with the stuff that we need to, to put on the warrant, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, do we want to look at some dates, I mean, I know that we're, for this month, we are going, you're going to, we've permitted, and that's going to be, um, settled, and so, we're going to send the, our tax bills out at the end of the month.
Yep.
Um, so, do, so that's enough to do for this month for you, um, so, um, do we wanna look at somewhere in July?
What, I will work with whatever we have going on, I have no problem coming in at night, or meeting at four, whatever you want, the only day that I'm gonna be out in July is the fifteenth.
Okay.
Other than that, I'll work with whatever you, what, whatever the board wants to do.
Okay, so, um, I don't know how, how the board feels about that.
Middle of July, I'm going on vacation, a week and a half.
Okay. Okay, okay, so the, sort of the middle, a week and a half, okay.
What time?
End of July, first of August, twenty-seventh, August third.
Okay, and year three, and I'm totally.
Cause the first week, everybody's gone, fourth of July, the second week, we're on vacation, don't come back, and for the week of the twenty-second.
Maybe we should push it into August.
Budget wise?
Yeah.
Budget wise, you look down through all the numbers and you look at the percentages, where, right now, we should be no larger in this, in a single, be it general government, public works, all those different line items, with the mass number of it, you should be less than fifty percent, right now, all those items are right around forty, forty-four percent, so as far as managing the money and what we've expended so far, we're, we're doing pretty good.
We're on track.
On track.
Okay, okay, um, when will the money run out? Is the question.
If you, if you hire a full-time town manager, that is going to definitely upset the top, because right now, we are over a hundred and, it's, it's, we're over a hundred and forty-one percent right now as far as office staff. So, because you have two office staff, and last year, we had one, so that budget, that line item, which is important to carry all those numbers across in that line item, so you see it, it says negative a hundred and forty-one percent, but if you look down again in the general administration, we've managed some of these other areas and we've kept it at forty-four percent on that, on that line item right now.
Right.
But if you hire somebody, that wage number's gonna go up.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, if you, you give them benefits, that number, which is pretty good right now, that's, that, that item's gonna go up too, so it's two items that are gonna jump really good on the, on the budget, so.
Paulie Spiker and everything, everything in that.
The Crip, the stuff that's fixed that we have no control over.
Right, and it's hard to, um, to, uh, I mean, we've gotten a bunch of resumes and applications, um, you know, and we've sort of looked through them and, and we, so far, I think there's just one. Um, we did get another this week, but, but the, the point is, is that, um, it's hard to, to, when people say, well, you know, what is the, the salary of, of our town manager at this point, we, there's nothing on, you know, that, we don't have that in the right direction, so, um, so, getting wholly back to the special meeting, um, I mean, do you think August is pushing it out too far?
Honestly, where you're going on vacation, if you could tighten up a date that would work for when you're around, and let's see if we can put it into that scope.
Twenty, the twenty-seven is a date that would.
It's a Saturday, right, you want Saturday?
Sure. I mean, it could be, I mean, we could do it during the week, but, um, Saturday works.
'Cause whether it's, whether it's July or August, as far as the budget to run the town office, it really doesn't matter, 'cause you're not gonna run out then, I mean, it's gonna be an issue in November or December, but not then, but the bigger thing for me that I'd like to see a part of the special is if the twenty-first, if you're getting engineering, studies back, so that gives us time, so we can look at that stuff to figure out, is there something there that needs to be on there, so we can keep that ball, I don't wanna see that ball pushed out another month. That's what I think it would, yeah.
Well, Jeff won't get home until the twenty-seventh.
The twenty-seventh would work.
Okay, do we wanna just sort of tentatively?
Yeah, let's tent.
Okay, okay, let's, let's, yeah, 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 let's, I think it's good at least to play save at this point, right?
We oughta have a goal to have it, because if we don't, it just keeps.
Right, right, rolling, yeah, kicking the can.
Is that the workshop or the?
That's the day of the special.
And then we'll back up from there and do all the, what, what is, so we said July twenty-seventh?
That's the date of the girl's test.
Oh, wow.
Good call, Larry.
Can we do it Sunday or no?
Oh, cancel.
Probably not. So, okay, thank you. That was.
Good info.
What, so what's the next Saturday, Sandy?
August third. Is the next Saturday?
Does that work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
August third, okay. Let's, let's, thank you for that, Mr. Daggett. August third. But we can, and we will have to have a workshop.
Yeah.
And postings, everything has to be backed, walked back from there. Okay. Okay, moving on. And, and of course, you know, coming up with that general government budget that we're gonna need, that we're, and we wanna talk about the computers at that time and, yeah, okay. Is there anything, am I missing something now? Okay, item seven, new business C, town manager applications. I did touch on that just two minutes ago. We do have one more application. Have, did you, did you both read it? Okay. Yeah. Okay. I will take care of that. Yeah.
Nothing on the other one?
No, nothing on, no, no, so far. I haven't heard anything, but I can circle back and check in. Okay. D, state of Maine unclaimed property.
So we got a email that we possibly have some unclaimed funds in the state. And so we filled out the information, the paperwork, we sent it in, they sent something else back, some complicated forms.
They're involved today, but they're closed.
Yeah. So we gotta call and find out how to.
Okay.
How to fill it out.
Okay, great. So you're, you're working on that.
I have a suggestion. Call your state representative and ask them to intervene.
Oh.
It'll work. Call your state representative and ask them to intervene. I did it a hundred times if I didn't want. Call the state treasurer, I did it for her. For one. Time after time.
Much, thank you.
Thank you.
They have called the state treasurer and.
And moved, moved the process on.
If you have the number, if you have the case number, we do have that, is that the signature, then ask them to stop. Awesome.
Thank you, thank you very much, Paul. Okay, I, we're just moving down our new business agenda. E, Charlie, Chuck E. B.
Well, there's three topics I'd like to talk to you about. One is, who come up with the payroll for fire department as far as what they get paid?
Well, first of all, is this an interrogation?
No, I'm just asking a question.
A question, okay.
There's gotta be, by law, they have to be paid a certain amount, so.
Okay. By law, they have to be paid a certain amount? I, I.
This was all Patrick and.
Yeah, it's through the attorney.
And the attorney and the packet from the, that says about, they make too many, too much money.
That's right.
Over a certain amount of time, then they can be considered a full-time employee.
Right.
I'm just trying to recap. I didn't come up with this plan.
Okay. Well, I asked a question before when I heard about this on what full-time fire department you guys base their percentage off of.
Is, it, it, the question I have is, it's a municipal fire department, it's not a full-time.
It's municipal, correct.
Correct. It's not volunteer.
Key point is municipal department.
Okay. Next question?
So what I'm saying is, someone had to base that percentage off of some, some full-time fire department. Look at the Maine State statute, Title thirty, I believe it is, in the Maine State law that a municipal on-call fire department, which Sang was a municipal department, not even an on-call department, that they have to be paid up to twenty percent of a full-time firefighter.
It's not what our attorney says, but.
Well, it's Maine State law. I've looked at it many, many times.
Okay.
And that's why they were, everybody's always paid minimum wage. So, and everybody's all worried about that they, if they get hurt outside of here, that they can claim workers' comp, which is true. It happened to me when I got run over at work. My workers' comp was from work. They came back and said, oh, you're on the fire department? You can't do that. So here's this. I didn't ask for it, they just did it. So, I was just wondering, because someone told me that they went by Dover fires, what they get paid per percentage, which you can't because they are not a full-time fire department. They're a, per the end program, so you cannot use what they get paid per hour as what you pay these guys for percentage.
Yeah, I don't think we based it on, I don't think we looked at Dover trucks, but anyway. Okay, anyway, carry on.
Fire department president. Obviously, Jeff wasn't on the board at the time, but where did the idea come up that the town could take money from a nonprofit corporation?
Never have.
You never have?
We never did.
Really? You never boot drive money?
That was advertised as a single fire event, not a, not a nonprofit event.
You have that somewhere that says that that's what they're on?
Yeah, actually, we had the screenshot and Patrick had them. I don't know what he did, but.
Because technically, the town can't raise them like that, like.
Correct.
Only the nonprofit can.
Correct.
So if they were doing that as a nonprofit, that means the town took it from a nonprofit corporation.
Are you just stating that they advertise it that way because they have the trucks out there?
No, that's what was actually posted on Facebook.
On Facebook or that's what was on that sign up there with the voluntary?
That's what they advertised on Facebook.
Okay. To me, Facebook doesn't mean nothing, but.
Again, it's all through your attorney, it's not through us.
I'm just asking a question.
Yep.
Like you said, legally, the nonprofit's the one that can do the boot drive.
What was, what was up to the attorney? What was that when you said, I'm sorry?
What happens and how that would be handled?
And was that on the single fire department's Facebook page?
Okay, Jeff, we'll go on, please.
Doesn't answer any questions, but okay.
No, well.
No, I did.
Yep, keep going.
That you guys have all that correspondence from the town?
The town should have it with Patrick. I mean, that's how that was all handled.
And three, the airbag situation. I know Jeff said that you guys, that his just was divided to now and two later. The town's people voted by four, and I was the only person with you guys, that we were gonna buy them together. If some of the packs they have here, I wouldn't put on. I've been doing this for thirty-six years and I wouldn't touch one. I came here and looked at them. I would not put them on them on. When the bottle thing about thirty years or whatever, you basically have twenty, twenty years of a bottle. By test dates.
Do you guys have any kind of an idea as to when you would like to look at this?
We're, Chuck, so I'm sorry. Chuck is just giving his, you know, discussing this with us and so we're not, we're, we're not discussing that right now, okay? He's just asking us the questions and then we're gonna move on. So go ahead.
Can we do that in open session?
Uh, if, if we, yes, but.
I was under the impression that I had to be on the agenda to discuss all this with you guys and get answers. That's what I'm under the impression. So, like you said, the town people voted to buy one, we ought to buy one. And especially if you guys want extra money, I'd be buying them packs.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. Um, as we, we have gotten our opinion from the attorney and, um, I don't. Whether we are obliged to spend that money, legally obliged to spend that money if they, if they do not need new air packs.
Well, you have, you have an opinion from the attorney, do you?
Yes, it's on the website.
Good.
It's posted on the website.
That's good. So I'll tell you what, somebody gets hurt with one of them.
Chuck.
Listen to it, you know, and I, you and I have a lot of history with this, so, you know, Dale's been in it for a little bit at one time. Everything constantly changes. So, old stuff is old stuff. And like I said, I mean, I was, five to fifteen, I would not put four of those packs on my back. And I wouldn't expect anybody else to. They're very old, they're non-integrated, they don't have head of this layer, they don't have buddy breathers on them for the air pack.
How do they pass inspection?
They go through a flow test and they check them all out and you go through them. That doesn't mean that they test that pass device, the portable pass device. Below is nine volt battery. It's not integrated into the pack itself.
Well, with those four packs, Chuck, those are the ones that, when Emerson gave us those packs, those are the ones that we're supposed to take out of service. Those are the same packs I was with, where I once got the pack integrated on the side.
Anything that had a system.
They've, they've seen their day, but we've got four other packs that you could use temporarily till they decide on the summer deal.
Yeah, we, we.
How many packs right now are out there after you took those four out? How many are there?
How many packs what?
That are in service.
In service? There's five, six, seven, nine. I do have a question, though. Why are we talking about replacing computers? Because they're getting old now, big. So I don't know why it's any different. It's the safety equipment, that's a computer. I mean, that, that's my question.
I, I. When we are told that they do not pass inspection, that is when they are not safe.
You've been told by everybody that's been in this for years and you took Hamlin's professional opinion, but you're not taking anybody else's professional.
Okay, okay. We're gonna move on from, we're, we're.
But my, my, the whole thing on that.
We're not, I mean, I'm not.
The town people who voted to buy them, they're expecting those four packs to be bought now, not when you guys feel like it's time to buy them.
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
You know, we, we as citizens are your boss. We told you guys to buy them by voting that way. So they need to be bought.
Okay, thank you.
And also, the only other thing that I have is that, do you know when that they changed the fire truck reserve back to the equipment reserve?
I have no idea.
Two years ago, three, I don't remember.
The town voted to do that?
Yep.
Okay. Well, so you guys got ten years to buy a new truck.
Yep.
So your, your ten thousand dollars is not playing.
Correct.
Minimum fifty you're in for a year.
Yep.
So the next ten years, you guys buy the truck.
Yeah, so you were here listening to us try to figure out how we're going to have everybody in this town pay their tax bills so that they can continue to live in their homes.
Chris, I get it.
I mean, we've had the chief of the fire department say that he didn't care whether, whether citizens.
I wasn't here for that meeting.
That's fine, but I'm gonna state it. Didn't care whether people could, could live in their homes and then have to move.
That's out of context. I specifically said, we're, we're, I'm bringing it up on recording if you want, but I specifically said that we cannot set a town budget based off if every single person pays their taxes on time.
No, the, well, anyway.
That's not what you said.
No, it is not. It is not. And you suggested that people move if they couldn't afford their taxes, is what you said. Anyway, so.
And everything you're saying, Chuck, we agree with. As far as what it costs for a truck and what it's gonna cost for this.
Yeah.
And these are the things that we've been talking with Jeff and with Matt and even when Patrick was here. The days of Sangerville, leading thirty guys on the fire department and feeling a thirty-man team can't sustain itself.
Correct.
You can't afford to do that.
Then you guys just wanted to go call.
Exactly. But that's what I'm saying. If, if fifteen or twenty or whatever the number is, is the right number, because you're still paying to train all these, you're paying all this other money.
Correct. And the town council's only ever paid for minimum training.
But at the end of the day, you've got all of these towns that are also, really, they're in the business. You go to Guilford, they've got Parkman paying them, Abbott's paying them. You go to Dover, they've got county money that's coming in.
Yeah, so we're in awesome.
Yep, and when you come to Sangerville.
You've got a lot of this area, it's gotta go down.
Yep, and what do you have at Sangerville besides the taxpayers of Sangerville?
Supporting the fire department.
Is there a reason you don't support the fire department?
We do support the fire department.
I feel like you don't, I feel like you're just very button heads of the fire department and all the citizens that are, that are trying to voice that opinion, you shut us down, you don't answer. So I'm just asking, don't get bitchy with me.
No, we're very pro-fire department and that's what we've been trying to.
We're, you know what, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna stop this if this can't be civil.
We're trying to be civil, but you are interrupting and not letting anybody ask questions. We are trying to be civil.
That is my job as chair, is to maintain order.
And that's okay, but.
Do not talk back to me. I will ask you to leave.
Oh, my lord.
I will ask you to leave. I'm sorry.
No, you're not, you're not. You're being super disrespectful.
Can I say one thing?
And the whole town is so.
We're gonna clear the room. We're gonna clear the room. No, you may not. No, you may not.
Madame, I will speak.
You may or can't.
What is your?
My name is Michelle Ward. I grew up on Mill Street since I was sixteen years old. This was my prom date. I babysat her twins. I bought cars from her. I entertained his kids. I've lived here forever and a day. We are a family. We don't talk to each other this way. And Madame, you are out of line and you treat us all like we're nothing. You talk down to all these people. We are a family. We don't treat each other this way. Where do you get off coming up from wherever you came from? I don't even know who you are.
Nobody does.
But who are you to talk to all of us like we are nothing? We are family. We have history with each other.
We support each other.
You come in here and you are so disrespectful, so smug, and it is inappropriate and it's unprofessional. I am sorry, but this is how I see it. We don't treat people this way, the way you are treating my family. I've had enough.
You're not alone.
Thank you for letting me speak, Madame.
You are welcome. Okay, moving on. Chuck, are you done?
Apparently so, because I ain't gonna get any answers, so.
So before we move on, I have, I have a question. This fire department thing, we got a legal opinion. Whose decision was that? Was it a hired opinion or was it MMA opinion? The legal, the legal opinion.
It was a legal opinion. What, okay. Honestly, maybe.
I had no heart, but that's why I'm asking.
And maybe, this is a time for everyone to hear the, from beginning to end, that I owe my family, from beginning to end, the, the, how this all came about, okay? A lot of it happened in an executive session, but now that the money, it was voted on and everything, we can disclose what was said in executive session as far as opinions from the attorneys. We work on, on what we're told from the attorneys as far as what we should do and it's advice we pay for from the town's attorney, but MMA is a, is an organization that we pay dues to and they have a legal department that they will, will advise us. So Dale, can you, can you?
Yep, so basically, I mean, the whole story in these packs, and this is why I'm still stuck on this. So when this all started. Matt, original conversation with the board is he needed twelve packs because we have this new ruling or whatever you wanna, I don't know the term.
OSHA.
Sure, me and Dave, if it's gonna come through and the, all of our packs are gonna run out and we're not gonna be in compliance. So with that said, that's when Jeff did the research, found out, verified what we had for packs, dealt with, yes, they're old, yes, the parts are available, yes, they're gonna be maintained for a very long time. So after that point of it, the petition, actually, that's when you went, you started your petition without any knowledge by the board or by the budget committee. We had a budget committee meeting. At the budget committee meeting, Matt was there. We talked about one pack, two pack, we talked about lease. Through the budget committee process, it was agreed that let's, because Jeff suggested it wouldn't do any good to buy, you put one in the service, we ought to do two. And if these packs are gonna, maintenance-wise, are gonna last for a while, why don't we get on a plan and buy eight, set the money aside and buy eight pack, eight year, in eight years, every pack that we would. And if these packs are gonna, maintenance wise, are gonna last for a while, why don't we get on a plan and buy, set the money aside and buy eight pack, eight year, in eight years, every pack that we would need, be replaced. So, part of the budget process, that's what was approved, that's why the ten thousand, the money was put in the reserve account, so next year, that money's available with another matching fund, so we divide two packs. So, when we left that meeting that night, out of the budget committee, that's what Matt agreed to, that's what budget committee agreed to, that's what we moved forward to the moment.
I didn't agree to that.
Yes, you did.
No, I did not. I gave you guys options that I saw fit, telling you that they were all old. I came up with four packs at once, all of them on a lease program or all of them at one time. The, the budget committee was ready to sign a lease agreement to purchase all of them, until Mr. Worf spoke up and said, "Oy, oy, oy."
That's not true.
No, that's not true.
No, 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 no.
That, that interest rate is way too high.
No, that's not true.
No, that's, no, it is not, no.
That's not true.
So, you guys said that we could do one. I said, just like the same thing that Jeff Libby has told you multiple times, that one is more of a hindrance than a help. That's why the petition was implemented in the first place.
Yep, there's a, well, that's, so the following morning, right after you agreed in that meeting, what we were gonna do, that's when you submitted the paper.
Till after the meeting, so I could see what we were gonna actually do.
Yep.
But you never did, told us that that was a-
I did it as a citizen, I don't have to tell anything.
No, you don't, you, 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 you don't, you're, you're a hundred percent correct.
So, you guys keep saying, well, you guys did, you did it without telling me, I don't have to.
No, you don't have to.
If someone tells them does a petition, they don't have to.
But it's extra, it, it's outside of the budget, okay? So, we had no ability to budget for this.
It wasn't a budget, I, it was, the petition actually stated out of the reserve.
Yep, so anyway, move forward, after the petition was signed, it was turned in.
Yep.
I received a few phone calls. Why are you allowing the fire department to be using packs that aren't certified, and you got fined by the state, and that's, none of that is true.
You remember that was ever told to anybody?
None of it was.
We did-
Bring one person that says that I said it to their face that signed that petition.
We did have people that said that.
They never came in?
I'm just telling you, this is what people told us.
I'm telling you, I kept signatures, and I never told one person they were expired. I told them the dates and the recommended for like-
In the meantime, uh, go ahead, Sandy.
Wouldn't you agree it's wasting everybody's time to keep the old state pile? He said, she said crap, why don't we move on with-
I think we should move on, yeah.
What are we gonna do about it?
Well, you wanna know why are we here, this is why we're here.
That's why I was gonna order him, saying what he said, she said, it's wasting-
Excuse me?
I was speaking. What he said, she said, it's wasting everybody's time, I think you need to move forward with taking a decision, because this is all-
Well, we're not gonna give this one.
Thank you.
Um, Debbie, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to know, um, there's so much contention here, and it's become such a huge issue, and it seems like everybody's dug their heels in on whatever side of the fence you wanna be on. Do we have the money to purchase air packs if we wanted to next month? Is the money there? You stated in one of the meetings that the money was there, and that it would be used as kind of a security, so when we needed them, it would be there. So, the money is actually there. So, I guess my question is this, is why, and I'm just being respectful and honest, why do you and Dale continue to dig your heels in, and what is it about this that you are like, absolutely not, we will not do this? I, I don't understand.
It was out of, outside of the budget process. If we don't have a handle on our budget, we are going to sink this ship, okay? And not on my watch, I'm not sinking this ship. And I, and you can answer for yourselves, and I'm not influencing anybody on this board, but it's outside of the budget process, and yes, there is money in the reserve. Um, it wasn't a CD, right now it is liquid. But what will, we, we were told, we were told they're, they're safe. Let's work on the budget next time, let's have an honest discussion about a budget the next time we go to budget. It's outside the budget, and therefore, what's, what about next year? And I know that Matt, your, your, your article, your article, I wanna use the right word, um, said it's a part of a three-part system, so next year you're gonna do this again.
There's no dates set on that, it's just a plan to update equipment, just like you guys want a plan to update equipment.
Then let's work inside the budget, and so that we all know-
Patrick and I came to you guys, and we came up with a number that he was happy with, and everybody shut it down.
That's, that's not what Patrick told us, but-
Would anybody in this room have said no to that increase for air packs in the budget process?
So, if the budget, we have this special meeting, if the budget is passed to give you the extra money that you need for your budget so that we cover everything, and we-
General government, general government.
Correct. If that is passed, is your intentions, the two of you, to go ahead and then now that the budget has been settled, to go ahead and order the air packs?
I would, I personally would like to wait for our next budget cycle so that it is part of our budget. This is outside of the budget.
But you can't do that, Tony. The townspeople voted to buy them this year, you can't wait till next year.
But it is up to the select board whether we spend that money.
Whether what? No, it's not. You have to spend the money, the townspeople voted to spend it.
No.
That's, yes, they did, that's state law, you have to go with what the people say.
No, 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 Chuck, it isn't.
It is.
And I, I, I'm sorry, um, I had, if, if you go to the town's website, I-
Listen, I don't care about the town's website, I'm telling you exactly what I've been on the phone with for the last week before I came to this meeting. You have, you have an obligation, the townspeople tell you to buy something and approve the money, you have to buy it.
No, we don't.
Yes, you do. And if you wanna give, wait till the budget cycle goes through and working the budget for them, give them a budget. Fifty thousand dollars is nothing. That wouldn't even cover why to buy payroll in Longsome. And just payroll, never mind the other hundred thousand dollars to, to buy equipment and stuff.
What's Cambridge's budget, Chuck?
Cambridge, I have no idea.
Far less than us.
I understand that. What the hell, they have five guys, Cambridge has three calls a year, you know?
So, is it your intention not to purchase the air packs by the end of the fiscal year?
No, no, I haven't even go there, 'cause they're gonna go up. I think we're talking about two different guys.
I wanna know Jones's plan, and so I wanna know what their plan was for.
So. So, I, and, and, the board can vote, and I can vote how I, how I, with, according to my, the way I feel.
Absolutely, and I respect if you have an opinion like that, I at least respect it, even if I don't agree with you.
Thank you. Patty and Paul, Patty.
I recognize the fact that this board is between a rock and a hard place. You're really hard. You're trying to do the very best that you can for this town so that we can afford to pay our taxes and live in Sangerville, and, and I really appreciate that. What I would like to see another budget year is that there be more than six people on the budget committee. We need more input from the average, the average taxpayer.
Yeah, a good cross-section.
Yes.
Michelle and I had this conversation yesterday, and it, and we are going to do that. I agree with you a hundred percent. It, it needs to be a, a greater, a broader cross-section and a process. I agree a hundred percent. Yes, and Michelle just, we, we had this conversation yesterday. Um, thank you for that input, very, very constructive. Paul?
The way, as I understand government, I think I know a little something about it, where it works, the legislative body passes laws, it's up to the executive to enforce them. And it's the best, the key. And that is exactly what happened with Sangerville. We passed a law saying that we wanted the air packs, and we wanted them to be bought. They are charged with enforcing that law, and if they want to wait until the next budget cycle, they have the right to do that. They don't keep civics anymore, in that basic civics. That's how it works. The state legislature passes a law, but the governor is in charge, it seems good, they are enforced. That is what happens. You rule the law tonight on ADVs, that's how they are enforced. And the council has approved the people, they're enforcing. That's how it works. Say what you want, Chuck, you're wrong.
Okay, we'll see.
Thank you, um, thank you.
Don't threaten me, Mr.- I'm not threatening you.
You're not threatening anybody, nobody's threatening you.
I just said we'll see, that's all I said, Paul.
Thank you. Um, anyway, if, if you would like to read the town's attorney's opinion, and thank you, thank you very much, Paul, for that, um, expert opinion, um, then, then, um, I, I please encourage everyone, and we published it the minute we got it, um, we had it verbally from, from, and discussed it in executive session. Um, this is before Jeff was here, and, um, and, um, and, um, so we knew that, um, and unless there is a contract on the other end that has to be honored, there's, then that, that would force our hand. But no, we, we make the decisions, um, and to spend or not spend, is the, anyway, let's move on, um-
Could we hear Jeff Peters' answer to his question?
Sure.
One question.
He asked about the lawyer's opinion.
Was it an MMA lawyer that we asked, or was it the town of Sangerville lawyer?
Uh, it was a town of Sangerville lawyer.
And this was done before I was here?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
And it was shared, um, in executive session. Um, it was a verbal opinion. We asked for a written opinion, um, and, um, so that we have it written, because there is so much uncertainty, and, um, and I, you know, so that's, that's where we all were at. Okay, um, getting actually on to the next, um, piece of business is F, MMA restricted access. One thing, and, and Jeff, this is, this is for your benefit, is that, um, anything that we ask MMA, or anything that we ask the town attorneys, is for all of us. Um, so, if I ask the question, and, 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 you know, uh, boards have a, a style, right? You know, some boards, just the chair accesses the attorneys or accesses MMA. We, on this board, anyone can access MMA, not the state, not the town's attorney, because that has to be voted on, and because that is, we have to vote, not vote, but agree that one of us is gonna speak to the town's attorney, 'cause we know it's spending money. Um, MMA, at any time, we can, but the question that we ask MMA and the response that we get from MMA needs to be shared with the entire board, because it's on behalf of the board that we are there. Um, and, um, what MMA is very leery about is, is board members, you know, saying, well, let me check with MMA to see if I can get a different answer, or something like that. It's on behalf of the board, therefore, the question, when you ask it, CC, you know, if, if, if in fact you access MMA, um, it's very helpful to CC the rest of the board, so that we're aware that you're inquiring, and Dale and I as well. Um, and then, um, the response then gets shared with us as well. So, it's helpful so that we're all on the same page, know what, and, and then we're, I'm not making a phone call, and they're saying, well, we just answered that question. Um, you know, why aren't they talking to each other as far as all on the same page? Um, so, the reason why I had this put on the agenda is because there are towns that have restricted access, and I, I don't agree with that. I think we all should have access, because we all have, at one point or another, asked, be asking questions of MMA. Um, and so, it would not be, in my opinion, that we should have restricted access, um, so, but it, it, it is something that, um, you know, if you, if you have somebody who's abusing it, and, and we have a, a certain amount of minutes that you can ask for free questions, so we have to, you know, we have to agree and, and have a game plan when we contact MMA. That's all I wanted to bring up.
Quick story, though, town's attorney, and this is why we only do the chair. And this was, um, down past you guys' little house, on your road, at the, yeah.
Oh, Sam.
Down at the end with the gate, we had a whole thing with the big blue rock.
Yep.
And MMA, honestly, they wouldn't give any answers. Um, they won't want anything controversial, MMA's all gonna-
Yeah, MMA is very generic.
We sent on, we sent everything we had on the road, bloody weather loud, the town's attorney, and, uh, which was fine. The next thing you know, town's attorney, one night, calls me, I'm on the phone.
Oh.
And then I find out, at our next meeting, at the same time they were on the phone with me, they were on the phone with, in the other room with a different attorney, with Mike. So, we got double billed for the exact same calls, for the exact same situation.
And did you get the same answers?
Nope, we got two different answers. So, that's why we said, no more, if one person is, deals with the town's attorney.
Right, town's attorney.
Town attorney, I understand that, but if Jeff all of a sudden say it was a personal matter, or he was checking on something for himself, or, I mean, there's three of you, so, and this is just hypothetical, say that one of you was doing something wrong, or he was wondering if he did something wrong, or you accused him of something wrong, or anything like that, can he, he then could call MMA for his own personal, and he wouldn't have to share that with you, to make sure that either what he was doing or a fellow student was doing, I mean, because it really keeps him in check.
I would suggest going with the town manager, in a situation like that. I understand what you're saying, and I can see that separation.
Right, keeps everybody in check.
For sure, I would, and that's for any of us, but I would see that, something like that, I would hope the conversation is already with one of us with the town.
Yeah, I mean, if we can't discuss issues, then, then this isn't working. Um, you know, we need to work together, that's what this is all about, is working together. And, and having a, 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 you know, one entity as far as presenting ourselves of, of the decision that we've made. We may disagree, um, but once we walk out of here, whatever the vote was, that's the way it goes. Um, so, um-
When I was digging around in that, and please don't take offense to this, it said that when, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I could be totally wrong, I may have read it wrong, is that when a new select person comes on to the select board, that's when you are supposed to go ahead and, and vote for, for a chair. It can't be like handed down from the previous chair, it has to be voted upon with all the new selection.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Has that been done, or is, for one, is that true, and two, has that been done in the-
That I am not aware of. Um, we, we actually, I was given the chair prior to the meeting, but we can have a vote right now if you want. Let's, let's do it.
I just didn't know if it was true, or how the law reads, or anything, so.
I didn't know, honestly, I didn't even know there was a statute about it.
Yeah, I, I didn't know that either.
Like I said, I was reading down through, and it was talking about that it's not a main state law, that you have to have a chair, that there are a lot of towns that do have chairs, and I was reading down through it.
Well, and, and honestly, the discussion I've had, and we're, are going to move on, because this meeting, we have paid employees here that we can't afford to pay. And aren't, don't end up getting, no, 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 I know, but what I was gonna say to you, is I honestly think in some ways, the chair should rotate, because there's a lot of responsibility here, and you learn a lot sitting here. And when you're sitting there, and I sat there for a good long time, you kind of just go with the wave. And, um, and in some ways, maybe every year it should rotate, um, because it does make a stronger board, and I am totally up for that.
Yep.
Um, as a matter of fact, I am happy to step down, um, honestly. No, honestly, I, I am and may need to. So, um, I am more than happy to, to let someone else take the reins. I, I have no, this is not, you know, anyway, and I am happy to do that, and we can discuss that, I mean, I, we-
I was just, I thought it was something that I had to make.
No, I appreciate that, thank you, I appreciate that.
Very quickly, very quickly, could you clarify, Main Municipal Association represents the town of Sangerville correcting issues?
They-
How long have we had a town, a separate town attorney, and who hires that?
We've always had a separate town attorney.
Right, so what-
Who hires that?
Uh, we, we've had many different town's attorneys, depending on what we need them for. There are firms that specialize in municipal law, and it's very helpful to have a firm that specializes in municipal law. What happened was, just very quickly, because honestly, this meeting-
No, I don't even know the details, I just need to know-
Sure. Sure.
Have we always had town attorneys?
Yes, yes, because MMA, like...
Even though they specialize in municipal law, I thought the Main Municipal Association specified the municipal law.
No, they, but, yeah.
Well, they do. It's Main Municipal Association.
Okay.
It's an association, period.
On lawyers, which is specialized in...
No, not just lawyers.
No, they have a lot of different things.
Yeah, they got health insurance.
Specialized in municipal things.
Issues, yeah.
But they will not give you a definition or a opinion of anything with any back and forth. Yeah. If, if it's, if you've got a straightforward, black and white question, they'll answer it. But if you've got anything for a question with any gray, the first thing they're gonna do, your response is always gonna be, contact the town's attorney.
Yep, yep.
That's how it works.
Because they, they just don't wanna, they don't do that.
Yeah, they don't go into the weeds at all. It's very, it's, it's what state statute, they will start rambling off state statute to you.
So we have money in the budget for that?
We do, we do, we do.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so that was all very, I think, important. Um, gee, Anders Skogden Bank, this is very important. So, we, um, we, Michelle, Jeff, Libby, and I, both sat in on a presentation, sat in a presentation for Anders Skogden Bank. And, um, they are, they specialize in municipal money and managing it, and, um, and so, um, they would like our business. Um, you know, right now, well, we had money at Maine Highlands, and we had our money at Camden National, and they're a bank, and they're a credit union, but they're not specialized in the needs of a municipality. Um, and, I mean, and again, both of you can correct me, because we all sat in on the presentation. And, um, you did send the paper, the, uh, to them, or no, maybe not?
Yes, I forwarded an email.
Okay.
Yes.
So, um, anyway, uh, um, I was very impressed by the services that they can offer our municipality. And they, they, um, specialize in small, small towns and their needs, um, you know, picking up the money, so that our clerk doesn't have to get in the car and drive to Dover, Foxquod. Um, that, that's very simplistic. Um, but other things.
Bond bank.
Bond bank.
So say you want to, I use it, so say you buy a fire truck, and you didn't wanna go take it out of general funds. They specialize in bond banks, stuff, all kinds of bond bank, water, sewer, towns. Uh, they're high on bond bank, actually, the representative sets on the bond bank. And so they can tell you a lot of things with bonds, and where the money is, how to get the money. Um, so they do that, they do the kind of conventional banking, but just basically for towns. Uh, but their return rates on our money is double that of what we would get, more than double.
More than double.
So, you'd be looking at...
Did you see that?
Mm-hmm. I'll give you a rough number, $6,000 from Maine Highlands. In the same amount of time, you would make like $40,000 for Anders Skogden. Twenty-eight, twenty-eight. I think it's 28,000. So it's quite a difference if you put your money there, and plus the other services they bring.
Right.
There is this one, this guy.
Well, there is, they, I had the question. So in Guilford, in the old medical office building, what?
Yeah, it's not a conventional bank where you take your checkbook in and do banking. They do business. They got a little office right in there.
It's like a settlement.
Sandy wants a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sandy.
Part of my question was answered, is the new branch that's in Guilford?
Yeah, it's, but they'll...
Doesn't answer phone calls, they like email, and they're there part-time, and...
Yep.
Cause I called them for my own business reasons, and I got an email, and...
You should...
Got a call, and nobody called, and then they're gonna call me back, and it seemed a little bit sketchy to me to be concrete and be there, like, the credit gave me, when I picked up the phone, they answered the call.
And there's a reason...
When I emailed, and they emailed, when we were in Facebook, they basically meet right back, and then call it, and it's...
Right, right. They're, um, you, I don't have their cards. Um, yeah. Um, they, that, there's a reason for that, because that's not a bran, and it's not a branch, and I may be getting the terminology, it is not a branch.
It's like a hub, I don't, you know, I don't really recall it.
So you would be dealing with them, per se?
Yes.
Right.
So where is the branch that you'd be down?
Um, what did they say?
They're, they're growing here, this is...
Lewiston, I think.
Lewiston, yeah.
And she's gonna drive to Lewiston, so I'm gonna...
No, 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 no. They would come and pick up the money, whatever frequency that we need for them to come and courier, um, the money. Um, and, um...
Seen that car, says Uniship or something like that, huh? They do the same thing.
Hold them up.
They, they, they come and pick the money up. Anders Skogden can do the same thing, so...
And then when you have a problem, you gotta go all the way to Lewiston and deal with some...
They, no, they have somebody in Guilford.
There could be two people in Guilford. They're supposed to have so many days a week or something.
Yeah, I think that they're two days a week, I think, is what I got from that.
But they just hide that girl on, too.
And, and I'm all for it, it's more money, I just wanted to wear that, I'm a business, and I wanted some money, and it was finally, like, I didn't get it from them, I finally borrowed it against my truck, because I said, "It's free, I asked, but you know..."
The guy, the guy's name's John Singdahl.
I know, that's who I got.
Is he the old town manager?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's where he ended up.
He's one of the ones that emails, but...
Sure, sure.
Well, that's unfortunate, and, and, uh, you know, if we'd had a little bit more leave time, it, you know, anybody could have sat in on this presentation. Um, and, um, it was, I mean, they really, really do want to, and, and I asked them what other municipalities, and they've got all the mun, they don't have Dover, but they've got, uh, most of the municipalities around us. Um...
Plus Utility District.
Right, yep, yep.
So as far as your end, Michelle, I mean, their pickup and everything you heard as far as for what, because you're the ones gonna deal with them.
Right.
I mean, it's our, but it's all you, so what's...
So like this time of year, you might only have to deposit once a week, but when taxes start coming in, I can call them and say, "I need deposits three times a week, or four times a week, or come every day," and that's what they'll do. The other option is that we'll be able to actually get a check clearing machine, and so we can put checks in, write them in there, and then auto-depos.
I would love that.
Is there a huge expense to them coming and picking up your money, or...
No, no, because...
So is there, isn't there?
No, there isn't.
Okay.
Um, because what they'll do is, they'll also work with another town, so it's not a wasted track.
So there's a heavy...
It's a multiple, right. But the interest rates were huge.
Good.
I mean, compared to what we've seen with the other two, other two institutions.
Right, for example, with the CD that we cashed out was at what rate?
Five.
No. One, two point five.
One point three.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
And Anders Skogden Bank is gonna, would, is, has a 5.5, I think, 5.5.
My number one year CD with the credit union was like five.
That's what we were before with them, and then when they rose into this moment.
No, so, anyways...
The other rate, but it's locked in for three or four years, or...
Nope, this is a three month, to start with.
Short term.
Yeah, yeah, short term.
The other thing that is really neat about it is, you can do an investment, you call them CWRs, I believe is what they were.
Yep.
And you can do it for a month, you can do it for three months.
You could pay out your...
You could ladder, ladder them.
So then your money is available, and if something does come up, that you can, you have more access. You can get your interest, but also have access to your money.
Good. Right, have programs where if you needed a big expenditure, like if, like if you're building, or you need a new truck or something.
They got a, they point to them directly.
So they'll go ahead and spread that out for you, so that it's not such a...
That's what, uh, Matt went, saw him, he gave him a whole framework packs, you know, what it would be, blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
All the way down. So what if you, for us, if you do, I mean, because obviously, we want to put all we can into making more money, but if something happens, and you do have to pull out X, what's, is there gonna be penalties for that?
I don't...
There will be, but there won't be as steep, I don't believe, because the way they get the structure...
Okay.
Cause I think before, the way it worked was, we didn't pay a penalty per se, you just, you lost that interest off of that for that set time.
That's exactly right. But that, we do need to drill that on, as far as a penalty.
That's the only thing. I believe it said, you could take the money out, if, and then replace it. So, you were in a hard time of year, like we just were? Sure. You could pull from that, but then replace it. Mandatory replacement, or you could...
That, I mean, those are questions we need to, those are all questions we need to...
They talked about that. I mean, it's great, if you can, I mean... Sweep the town, sweep the town.
Yeah.
That's what I meant, sweep the towns out of it. Okay.
Yeah.
Do they offer audits? Sorry, do they offer audits to help you balancing and getting the...
Good question, very good question.
Oh, we can...
They don't have a pre-service?
Vanessa, do you?
I don't know, so, no.
That's a very good one.
We are required to have an audit every year. And not necessarily does the bank do the audit, it's the independent auditors.
Right, which I understand, but also, when the checkbook's not balanced, and we have no idea how much money you have, would somebody at the bank sit down and work with you to make sure that...
That's why we got an auditor coming right now, trying to straighten that out.
Absolutely, that's a big concern.
Well, but I'm also wondering, back, just keep going on what you are saying. If they are starting to get specialized in the municipal level, they may have somebody within them that is a Trio expert.
Exactly.
Cause I mean, that's why we use an outside company, because it's one thing to be able to balance the checkbook, but then the checkbook has also got a balance of the Trio as well.
Well, and the problem is, that Trio has not been, none of the budget stuff, nothing's been balanced through the budgeting system, so through Trio since 2014.
Oh my God, why?
So, I don't know, they just, they didn't do it that way. They did it by hand, so...
I'm really confused to why the auditor signed off on it every year.
Me too.
Yeah, this is before, before, yeah. We were all there.
So do we truly know how much money we have?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay, could you...
Yes, we do.
Yes.
That's another reason I'm, why I want to use SJ Royals, they do Trio. So they can integrate that all, we don't have to go in that Trio, they can do it all.
But it would be nice if Anders Skogden did come up with some new programs or something to talk you about.
Yeah, especially like Trio, that's a good one.
Well, and John, John Skogden has worked with Trio.
Correct.
Um, because Ringo had Trio, um, Sangio had Trio, so Keith's familiar with some, that way.
So, I, I mean, I hate to, um, to table this, because, I mean, we've got that money that we really, really want to, I mean, three months, three months go by like crazy, as far as like the buying, getting a CD, do we want to put a chunk? I mean, I think we need to move everything over. I mean, do, are we ready to make that decision, I guess, is the question.
The bigger thing, I'm okay to move it, the question for me is, how much do you invest into it? And where is the line that you're locked, and you're paying penalties on?
Right, we need to find all that out.
But I mean, we could move our money over there, and just be careful about what we're locking into.
Right, yes.
Leave what's actually in our checkbook more than what we would like, but don't invest as much as we normally do. Until you get all these questions answered, and then once you know that, it's like, okay. You know your penalties, and you know everything else.
So continue to keep Camden full, so, and start with Anders Skogden?
I wouldn't, I would lean house and put everything under one roof.
That way you get your, you get your check thing, and you may want to look at what your levels are in your sweep. So you may put 3,000, leave 200 in the sweep. That way you have that liquid money, you can grab a hole, and it doesn't affect you. Yes, that's what I'm saying, is I would leave my liquid money at a higher level than you really think you want to be at.
Right.
And then once you can confirm back to us what all of our penalties are, or if there are penalties, then once you know that information, then you can look at that sweep and decide, you know, whether or not you can invest.
What's owed, that's what I'm not too...
Right, right.
Because they don't get it wrong. What we have for a sweep now is too low. Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Um, and, and, you know, it, 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 at one point or another, not tonight, but, you know, I mean, we do have, you know, somebody who could advise us financially, Mike Wark, who is an absolute genius, and, and, um, so...
That's appropriate.
Anyway, he's now a citizen of the Townsangerville with no connection, so, I mean, obviously, we have to vote on that. Um, but we don't need to discuss that tonight.
Right.
Okay. Um, so let's, so, should we, should we vote on that? Okay, so Ali will make a motion that we are going to move our entire, um, bank account that is now over at Camden National, and also the money that's still at Maine Federal Island. Or do you want to leave that little bit there?
I would like to leave that little bit there, because it's not that much, um, so that we can go get change. If we're running, if we're running short, I need to have an option.
And it's close to me.
Okay, okay. Okay, so you'll keep that small, you know, the petty cash, whatever, you want to change account there, um, over to Anders Skogden Bank, and pending, oh, you're gonna do it, but then we will figure out the investment.
Ask questions, get more input.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, every day we wait.
That's my motion.
Showing, second.
Okay, we're going to vote on that, all in favor? We have three in favor of that. Okay, um, let's skip the next H, let's go on to I, naming, um, two roads for 911, which is important. Um, so you and Sam went out on a 911 mission?
We did. It was a very interesting mission. We had our little wheel, and we had our maps, and we went out, and these two places do definitely need to have a road name, and then we need to number the houses that are in there.
Okay, that's great, and...
So, um, we would like to have Memory Lane.
And these are names that the people chose?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and obviously, they don't conflict, you did all your due diligence with regard to conflicting with, no other...
Any other numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, that one I know where the borough...
All kinds of pictures, and she was, and she put your fastest together.
Oh, how sweet. I did not look at it yet, but I'm going by, um, do I need to look at it?
No, because they, I mean, I actually, I mean, I called on the Memory Lane one, because I wasn't sure where that all laid out, and talked to Kim.
Right.
Fully agree. Once I learned where all the, whose lots were, and how that was laid out, that's definitely these names.
Okay.
She tried to get me onto a little tiny trail line.
You said, yeah, a goat trail, a go pack. Which would have involved a tow truck, and a lot of hiking.
So both names, were those suggested by the landowners, or...
Yeah, yeah, in fact, the Naughty Pines Lane, I mean, there's a big sign right there that's advertising your business, which are the, the cabins are in there.
Oh, nice.
So we're just gonna keep it the same name.
Great. Okay, so I will make a motion, um, that we are naming two new roads for, um, emergency 911. The first road, um, is Memory Lane, um, and do I need to be more specific, probably?
It's off from Ames Lane.
Off of Ames Lane, which is one of our town's roads. And then the second one is Naughty Pines Lane, which is off of?
Borough.
The Borough's Road.
Yeah, that one was the easy one, but Memory Lane was the hardest.
Um, that's my motion.
Second.
And, um, all in favor?
Yeah.
Three in favor? Okay, we took care of the remote participation. Three in favor, okay, we took care of the remote participation, okay, okay, so just quickly backing, um.
We have one left, that's it.
Yeah, I know, okay, you mean, oh, the select board's concerned? Well, no, okay.
Oh, sorry, yes, I forgot about that one.
Well, one of the things that I would like to, I would like to suggest is we take July off with regard to board meetings. Obviously, we would sign warrants, we would sign articles and everything else and we would take care of that, but, um, um, I'm, other towns do it, um, it's, our town manager said that, um, Guilford does it and, um, I, I almost remember early on, we took like an August break, very, very early on when I was on the board. And, um, you know, we've got a lot going on as far as things, um, and, uh, so, uh, it's a, something we can discuss. Um, I don't know how you feel about that.
I'm open to the idea, the only concern that I have is that we're planning a special. I mean, we don't have to have, we don't have to have select board meetings to have workshops for.
The special.
The special, but at the same time, when I say that, I personally hate workshops.
I know.
Um, because the only difference between a workshop and a selectmen's meeting is you can't vote in the workshop. So if, if you have that meeting and you've got everything ready and you're done, then you gotta schedule a selectmen just so you can kinda vote on that. So, but I mean, with vacation schedules and, I mean, as long as everybody thinks we can get through.
I mean, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I mean, if everybody thinks we can get through and have the special on time and be able to do it, I'm okay with it.
Speaking of vacations, you said something about signing warrants and I know that he's been called out of work, um, signing stuff. If we're gone from the tenth to the twentieth, we won't even be in the state.
Right.
So he can honestly?
Will there be anything in that pond that you guys are gonna need him for?
I mean, it's, so, this is how I would, I'm guessing this would work, if we decide we're gonna have meetings in July, what I would suggest is, like, for you guys on the ninth, before you leave, stop in and see Michelle, sign everything off.
See Michelle, see if she has something to do with you, Michelle. Yeah, I had to, cause I was worried about, he's gonna be out there and he's gonna have panic attack, I can't get my email, I can't talk to her.
No, and, and the other thing, as far as something like warrants and, you know, and, and minutes and things, two signatures is kosher to get to.
Right, and that's the only thing that we would actually sign off on, just so those could be.
Right, we're not gonna make any board decisions, no decisions. Um, because we always want the full board to make decisions. Um, so, um, so it's, I, you know, we could have one meeting as opposed to.
But I can just try it.
Okay, okay, and see how it goes, we can always.
If something comes up, we can call a meeting, I mean, we can post a meeting, it's not like we can't.
Right, and we'll, we'll stay away from the, 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 um, vacation schedule.
I just really, it's just leave it kind of up between Michelle and Jeff, I mean, if we get enough information in, so we have something to talk about.
Yeah. Sure, we can get together, we can get together, as long as we post it. Okay, that's, um, I don't think we need to vote on that, that's not something votable. Um, item eight.
Well, are we all in agreement?
Yeah, oh, are we?
Hey, Joel.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Yeah, Summer Jam.
Yeah, right, okay, item eight, select board's concerns. The only thing I was concerned about is what you brought to me as far as Fidium and them giving us a.
Oh, shoot, I am so glad you brought that up.
Yes.
So, Michelle.
Yeah.
Jeff, cause let's look at your Jeff one.
Hey, I have a question about that, this is the problem, Jeff, Jeff.
I know it is.
I was on video and you hear Jeff, Jeff and somebody just called and said, no.
Yes, Libby and JP.
Libby?
Yeah.
And JP.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you, I agree with you, a hundred percent.
Okay, so.
Libby, JP.
I don't know if you remember, Michelle, but back when Patrick was here, in one of our selectmen's meetings, we had a small packet and it was a boat, high-speed internet and fiber. And within that packet, there was a map, wasn't a very good map, but it was a map of Sangerville and it had all kinds of dogs all over it. And we had to sign to approve for that high-speed, for that fiber to get run.
For premium at the corner of Townhouse Road, up there, that little sub box?
Nope.
Nope.
Before that. We, we had to sign, I don't remember, I think it was because.
Do you think it's before Michelle though?
I don't really remember that, the only one I remember is the premium.
Okay, I mean, it just, it looked like it just had stamps all over.
It is before you.
You've been talking about here?
What?
It was talked about here at a meeting.
I already bumped it up.
No, 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 I want that paperwork.
Do you have it? The paperwork?
So what's the name of the company?
Fidium, S-I-D.
What do you want it for?
Because when we approved for all of that high-speed to be run in town, what was supplied to the select board was a map with, and I don't, the roads weren't really even on it.
No.
But it was all kinds of dogs everywhere.
It was like a, a, a satellite photo.
But it was very obvious Doughty Hill weren't lit up and some of these other roads weren't lit up. So when we looked at the map, it's like, oh, this is all consolidated customers, is what this map was. And it was a dog representing every single house in Sangerville that had consolidated. So that map is what we approved for fiber to be run to because all of these customers were gonna have high-speed internet. So now the fiber's been run and it's been run down Silver's Mills and I am being told that it is not going down any of the camp roads.
Oh, really?
All of the camp roads were lit up in that map.
Okay.
Now, I don't understand, I haven't had any more conversations about this, I called Jody just to ask her if she still had that map. Um, but for me to try to understand this, to spend that money to go run that wire down Silver's Mills and you got eight customers, but if you branch down them camp roads, you're gonna get thirty, forty, whatever, more. So, but I think we need that map as the town to say, hey, this is what you said you was gonna provide to citizens and now you're not and why? That's why I'm looking for it.
That gentleman that sat in the office that had the meeting with me, he gave you the brochures? He sat outside and you hadn't come inside?
I don't remember, I don't remember brochures given to me.
He had them on the counter, anyway, the guy that, you, he was sitting outside, his senior hadn't come in, he had a meeting with us. That's the guy that made it all, cause he's got it all on his computer. He, and then there's, there's a, there's a date in there that you can request here in there and Palm was all lit up.
Yeah.
The Palm was all lit up on it.
Yeah, now, now the.
Now it doesn't exist.
Well. I bet Sammy's got it, I don't have a friend of Sammy's.
From what I'm told, anybody around the Palm area that's called in to get hooked up, it's not gonna be available.
It was all lit up.
Yeah, that's why.
And, and we sign, you know, we sign that.
You're right.
Based on.
Everybody.
Yeah, everybody.
He showed it all lit up, he had the map.
Yeah. We'll get ahold of him.
Thank you, Jeff.
Cause I think I'm scheduled for Fidium to be hooked up at the house for twenty, was it June or July?
I was a truck.
When Fidium runs in.
No.
Okay, I remember that one.
Yeah, he wouldn't go that. But they won't hook up down the camp road, so.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, uh, I, what I, we, we can do open session limited to two minutes per, uh, ex, well, extension from chair.
Should we go back in?
Pardon me?
Should we go back in?
I really wanna jump in Palm.
It's a lot cooler without all those things.
I just, I have a concern just listening to conversations around town and all of that, that I'm really afraid that you called this emergency meeting and we need this money for general government, that not, not working with the fire department and, and just saying, we're willing to do this or we're willing to do that, like to show that there's some give and take, I'm really afraid people are gonna come in and they're gonna shut you down as a tip for tat, so to say. And I really don't wanna see that happen, so it's a concern of mine that this is gonna blow like sky high and cause huge problems for the town.
So the emergency meeting, just so you know, was not.
Well, no, she's talking about we have an emergency special.
Special meeting.
She's saying she'd go back or a special.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the money that we liquidated.
Honestly, Debbie, I agree with you and that's where I am torn. My conscience, my gut, the best interest of this town is not to spend that forty thousand dollars.
Right.
And I am struggling to look at the best interest of this town in spending that money. With that being said, when Jeff just presented those numbers, which again are far, that's less money than what we've been presented with, that's actually eight thousand dollars a piece. That's thirty-two thousand dollars to buy four packs.
We said they were eight thousand something a piece, right?
Can I do that? The total, the total amount, if you bought all four packs, thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three thousand.
So we're gonna be smart just to go ahead and do that and so that we can have a special meeting, we can get the budget back on track and we can move ahead and try to, try to repair and heal this community a little bit.
And are you thinking that they should make the meeting and put the article that we need money to fix our functioning municipal and at the same time, we need it so that we can buy the packs and we need this much money, you need you guys to?
No, what she's saying is she wants us to spend the money today, or a plan to spend the money that's been approved so we're in good faith with the town to go back and ask for more money.
That's a good way of putting it.
Right.
Because I'm just afraid it's gonna go tip for tat and then we're not gonna have money in government.
Well, honestly, I feel that's why we are where we are.
It's absolutely why you're, why you are where you are.
I'm excited about the savings you found.
I mean, if we save, we can save seven thousand dollars right now.
Eight thousand, that's a lot.
I just, that's my concern.
Thank you, I appreciate that and that's a valid, valid concern. Um, okay, anyone else for, uh, open session, two minutes? Nope, okay, um, I, yes, did you? He's holding his hand up, um, I, 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 I mean, I don't even know what time it is.
Six thirty.
Yeah, six thirty-nine.
Oh, man.
Still do.
Yeah.
It's gonna take us a few minutes to do those.
No, do what?
Believe it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we need to do that, exactly, session, okay, we're.
We're gonna take July off.
We, um.
I need my book, so.
We're calling.
Meeting is gonna be in August, I'm just.
An exact.
It's gonna have to be a meeting in July.
Yeah, we'll have to, there's no other way to do it.
Okay.
So you don't have meetings in July.
So, um, I'm calling an executive session. The first executive session that we're gonna go into is, uh, for personnel ma- oh, let's do legal.
Yeah.